Welcome to the 4:00 PM work session for Lynchburg City Council on today's September 24th. And first on our agenda is capital improvement prioritization. Ms. Hart and Mr. Wodoka.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
For some time, the Department of Public Works has been working to develop an objective and comprehensive capital improvement plan rating system. As we went through the capital improvement plan discussion over the last budget cycle, it became very apparent that we needed to make sure that we had a very clear way of evaluating our capital projects as we move forward. So for some time, even before this, Public Works had been working on that system. We're going to show you today specifically the transportation component of that. Although there is a comparable building side of things, it's a similar type of system. But we just want to get your information or get your input and give us you for information. I do want to point out that there is a parallel process in our finance department to update how we are managing the data, the financial data on our capital improvement plan process. We are changing everything from a very manual process to using the technology that we have to make our planning for the long run much more robust. So glad to finally have Ms. Hart here after a couple of times when we tried to get to it, and she's number one on the list today. So thank you.
Thank you, City Council, for having me today. At your workplace, I did put a larger version of a spreadsheet that I'm going to conclude with because it's going to show up very small on the screen. Just thought I would give you something to have at your table. So...
Did you open the door?
Can you fix it while he talks?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. The purpose of today is basically, we want to discuss our long-range planning guiding documents, review cities' capital selection criteria, review examples of other organizations' methods of prioritization, and explain additional considerations when we're building our CIP. We did present this to PDC in their July 9th meeting. They gave us input, some very good input, and we tried to include it in our new version of our prioritization plan. This list of, or our transportation projects are developed in many ways, but one of the ways that we develop our transportation projects is through long-range planning. VDOT does a lot of long-range planning for us. They have done a SARS program for us. They have actually looked at safety on all the expressway entrances and exits. They've also done various corridor studies. I believe I saw the Timberlake corridor study sitting at your table. So that's one way that we get planning documents. And I believe that when we do these planning documents, somebody pays for them, and they should be living documents that we refer back to at various times. Another example is the Central Virginia MPO does planning studies for us, and I've got some examples here. Of course, we do our own city studies, and examples are, and you're very familiar with them, the Tinbridge Hill Neighborhood Plan, Downtown 2040. We also do a lot of maintenance condition assessments about our various assets. So these are just some of our plans that we do our own internal long-range planning. Here's our selection criteria. Again, this has been reviewed by PDC. Obviously, safety and cultural deficiency is the first one, and is weighted the highest. And I'm not going to read these to you, but we felt like that this, we, as a public work staff, met several times to come up with these selection criteria and rating, and then we pulled in people from economic development, community development, and water resources to look at what we were doing and saying, "Does it make sense?" And they thought it was certainly a good first start. So this is what we started with. PDC also asked us to define all the selection criteria, so we took an opportunity to do that. And again, I'm not going to read these to you because they're all very, in my mind, very self-explanatory, but this is, we did develop these definitions especially for future use. Again, some more selection criteria. And basically, we, the criteria from 1 to 7 are basically, 1, there's little to no problems; 5 is somewhat of a problem; and 10 is major significant problem. PDC did ask us to consider just using the scores 1, 5, and 10. Going back and talking with city staff about it, they liked using all of them. So these are the ones we defined. However, staff, when they get together, will rate something a 2 or a 3. So we use 1 through 10 as our rating scale. Again, some definitions of our criteria. Criteria 8 is basically, higher ratings are given to projects that include adding sidewalk, eliminating span wire. In other words, getting rid of infrastructure that's structurally or functionally obsolete. And then criteria 9 is based on the VDOT road weighting, obviously whether it's a trail all the way up to a major highway. And these are just some examples in your packet that we picked up of other cities' rating examples. We wanted to keep ours very, very simple, but this is an example of Bedford Water Authority. Again, they have some of the same things that we have. This is an example from Martinsville. Again, the criteria and codes are also very similar. This is the SMART scale, rating scale. This is very complicated. We did not choose to replicate this. It's very complicated, but of course, this is the one VDOT uses for statewide projects. And then this is an example from the Central Virginia MPO. Again, very complicated, developed by a consultant. We didn't want to go with something quite this complex. The other things that we consider when we develop our CIP is basically, there's just very little local funding for transportation projects, and that's the bottom line. Engineering staff, as well as parks and rec staff, really does our very best to maximize all the state and federal funding that we're eligible for, and you guys are well aware of some of those, SMART scale and revenue sharing, but we apply for projects in each and every single one of these grant areas. I will tell you that state and federal grants, their criteria change with frequency. Our staff probably goes to VDOT meetings two or three times a year just to keep up with changes in VDOT criteria and understanding their programs. We absolutely need to rely on state and federal funding to fund these particularly large projects. When you're talking about a $25 million, $30 million project, we are going to be relying on state money for that. It is our desire every year to match revenue sharing. We get $20 million over two years, and it is our desire to match that. So it's $10 million city, $10 million state, and we desire we get a lot of good projects from that particular funding stream. Financing considerations, as you know, Heritage High School and College of Lake Dam have taken up, have limited our funding for debt service, so that limits some of what we can do with transportation. We try to, as we develop CIP, spread large projects out unless they're 100% funded by an outside source. And we also try to schedule small, medium, and large projects throughout the five-year CIP. So, and that includes trail projects, bridges, culverts. We try to spread those out, so we'll have a large project or two, and then a numerous small to medium projects. There's obviously some subjective decision-making that has to happen in this process. Number one, just because it's in a plan that we developed three or four years ago doesn't mean that you do it now. You have to look at your current circumstances. Also, things change. For instance, with the College Lake Dam, that became a critical project, and so it had to get moved up. Didn't matter where it would land on any rating scale. And the same with Indian Hill Bridge. We thought it was in good shape. It developed a problem. It has moved up into the forefront. We've got limited staff to manage projects, so even if we get money, we've got to watch about managing our projects. And PDC recommended that cost benefit should be a factor of this, and we developed a couple of options, and they did choose one of the options. And this was the cost benefit factor that we chose, along with the input of PDC. And basically, if you get 100% funding, the weighting criteria remains the same. If you get, if it's only 50% funded, we take away about 20% of the score. So that's how we kind of developed a cost benefit factor, giving projects that are 100% funded by either state or local funds a higher rating. So with that, it's just a number of things that we keep in mind as we're developing CIP. This is just a guideline. There are many, many factors that you have to consider developing a CIP, you know, including input from community development, how much money we have. We usually get direction from the city manager's staff about how to develop our CIP. And I think there should be one more slide with the, back the other way. I think the spreadsheet, the spreadsheet isn't there. At your sheet, or at your seat, we've got a spreadsheet that shows the completed work, if you want an example, and it's in your packet as well. But the spreadsheet basically shows the completed work of how we develop our CIP rating sheet. This is just a sample. We've probably got on our project list, we have probably 50 to 60 projects on it. This is just a sampling of five or six, just to give you a feel for how the whole process works. And we hope, as we develop it more, we've used it only one year, as we develop it more, we hope to pull in community development, economic development, Parks and Rec, and other people as we move through this. It's kind of a working document. So with that, I will answer any questions or take comments.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Hart, for the presentation. And as you mentioned several times, it did go to our physical development committee for a review. And so I'm going to turn first to Chairman Perro, so that if he has any comments or anything to add.
All right, thank you. I will. And this is an informational item, right? There's no action from council at this point. All right. So when council looks at this, we should think of it as a guide, okay? And as any, with any rating system, you can game the system. So I think as you see, as you can see, the percentages or the rating on the far right-hand column or the next to the far right-hand column, notice that the increments are pretty tight. It's not a very large scale. That's one of the reasons why I want to know if we could do a 1 to 5 or a 10, just to spread the scale out a little bit. And I respect staff's decision to have a little bit more flexibility. But as we look at this, it's good just to keep in mind that this will show a subjective ranking of what the project should be. If you think that something is inconsistent with what you believe the rating should be, go back and look at the individual scores on it. And when I say, and I don't mean this in any derogatory way, Ms. Hart, but by saying it can be gamed, things could be made more important than possibly that they should be, or not as important, or if you shift funding into one column, away from one project and into another project, outside funding, then that's going to, that's going to either raise or lower those projects. So when we look at this as decision-makers, as policymakers, in terms of the overall CIP, and I'm assuming this information is going to be available to council during the CIP process, you will come to us with the CIP, and I guess you'll have the rating backups if we would like to look at that.
Yeah, I think that was the feeling is if you wanted that information, certainly we can make it available.
Okay.
We think we probably should run this by PDC before we...
Right. So I guess the intent of me saying this, this is not hard and fast. This is a guide to help us individually frame our decisions and our beliefs about what projects are important, but it's going to give us a pretty good taste of reality about, I hope, about where these projects align as far as the importance to the, from the perspective of the city. So I think it's a good tool, but it's not the end-all, be-all. There's still going to be our personal subjectivity, but I think it's a really good tool to help us make our decisions. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Helgason.
Thank you, Councilmember Perro.
Thank you. You know, I appreciate having at least some kind of metrics, and I do recognize the subjectivity of lots of it. And I also appreciate the fact that it's coming somewhat on the heels of last year's CIP, when there was a project, a $10 million project, that probably wouldn't have scored very well if we would have scored this last year, but somehow, we voted for it and passed the $10 million sidewalk. So I'm glad that we're at least responding and saying, "Hey, let's look at actual structural deficiencies and congestion." You know, a couple of things, though, on here, and I appreciate the fact that there's lots of different items for weighting, but a couple of the items, number 6 and number 7. You know, those can kind of be co-opted and put together with, you know, maybe number 4, to then have the compilation of number 4, 6, and number 7, as Councilmember Perro said, gave me in the system, would be a 25% weight, which could be above the actual structural deficiency and congestion kind of items. You know, because when I look at some of those, the better streets and the multimodal, I'm thinking back to Campbell Avenue, where I heard from staff over the years that has said that we, that maybe that road needs to go on a road diet, meaning getting rid of a lane of traffic in exchange for bicycle trail or a walking path or something. And I've yet to hear a citizen out there that said, "Hey, let's get rid of a lane," you know, "especially on a main arterial road." So hopefully, when we're looking and coming up with systems that are going to be subjective, I realize, that we'll be able to remove some of those as much as possible. I mean, I'd actually kind of like to see number 6 and 7 completely removed from the weighting, because when we're looking at a transportation project, it's not, you know, we're not making a transportation project so we can sit back and observe its beauty. Obviously, we want to have it nice and work well and have things, but we're using a transportation project based on the fact that we can traverse, based on the fact that we can walk, or ride, or drive, rather than sitting back and going, "Wow, this is an artistic marvel." So I'd like to see those kind of, you know, personally removed. I realize this is, you know, it's in the early stages. I'm glad that there's something there that can quantify, or to help quantify something that's particularly qualitative, I realize, but at least there can be a scoring mechanism that says, "Hey, we need to look at this a little bit more," or we, especially since you're dealing with right now the transportation, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so it's not, we're not dealing with all the other ancillary items that would be part of a CIP, but this may follow suit.
I think the idea was that we would develop similar type rating systems in other areas as well, potentially.
And so with that, we would then kind of say, "Okay, for transportation, this is the one that rises to the top, but that's not above something else that is needed." How would you interplay and interconnect the relationship between two competing, you know, lines, if you will, like one's a building and one's traffic?
And I think it's always a balance. I agree with you. You know, we plan to use this as a guideline. Again, it's not an absolute. You've got to use some good judgment. Just it, it, it's not like SMART scale where there's an absolute score, and here's the cutoff, and if you don't meet the cutoff, then you are out. We try to balance small, medium, and large projects, so it could be a sidewalk project gets in because we can fit it in our funding scheme. It's been needed. It's on the list for many, many years. That's how maybe a smaller project would get in. So we have to do small, medium, and large. As far as how do you, how do you rate between transportation buildings, a park project, those type of things? I think that's always going to be subjective. I think the city manager's office, in the past, we talked about getting a group. We used to have a large group of people get together in a CIP discussion. It included Parks and Rec, community development. We talked about it. And kind of as a staff, we decided what to bring forward with the approval of the city manager, who was generally sitting in the room, listening to the discussion. And he or she brings to you a CIP that they think they can support. And from there, you guys will have to debate and discuss and decide what should be included. So that's how it's happened in the past, and I'll turn it to you if you would like to say.
Yeah, so that's sort of the next iteration we would like to get back to. So I know that has been a practice of the past. This is really a three-year revamping of how we're doing capital improvement planning. Last year was to get a plan that was fundable, that was, something was feasible. This year, we're developing these rating systems and managing the financial planning better. And then next year, we're hoping to add a much more robust staff discussion about these projects. Just, it's just multi-year updating of how we're doing business.
And with that, you had mentioned one of your slides, that, you know, with critical projects with changes, like College, Lake Dam, you know, Indian Hill Bridge and other things that have maybe come to light and fruition. So we didn't have any of this kind of scoring mechanism last CIP when we adopted just a few months ago.
We did have the scoring mechanism. It was a rebuilding year on CIP. I will say, the deputy city manager was trying to work with the funding part of it. We were quite rushed in development of it. We're working to do better with that. So we did not, we used it for one year. We skipped a year due to last year's changes. We think we've got the financial piece down now in terms of how we're doing the CIP. With the finance department has got a spreadsheet. It should be very, very easy for departments to submit their CIP. So we're thinking that's better. We had developed this about two or three years ago. We did not have anyone in the city manager's office. We didn't have any money that approved it, so we were not officially using it. We were just working with it as a staff. Deputy city managers saw it, thought it was of value, and thought we should bring it forward to you.
So last year, like, for example, when we had those two critical needs that came up.
Correct.
The dam and the Indian Hill Bridge, in addition to the discovery that the police building need to be kind of pushed to the forefront, there was still an item, the one that I mentioned a minute ago, the $9.9 million sidewalk, that was still recommended, but that wasn't under this new, if this new system would have been there, I imagine the scoring would have probably, other than political reasons, would have kind of nixed it from a quantitative analysis.
Not necessarily. Again, it's, you know, you're going to, it could be that all of your top projects are $30 or $40 million. Well, we know we can't afford four or five $30 or $40 million projects in the CIP, so we're going to, again, this is the subjective part of it, is you might have one $30 or $40 million project in there, and several $10 million projects, and some $5 million projects. So there, it is very possible that a sidewalk project would score well against another sidewalk project. So I think that's how we got to Old Forest Road being funded, as well as Florida Avenue being funded for last year, proposed, and then funded.
But not necessarily comparative to a dam bursting, or...
Well, yeah.
Oh, that's what I'm asking.
Well, so here's the thing. So when you're doing, when you're developing a CIP like that, it's really, it's really about like putting together a puzzle, because you want, there's all kinds of things you want to do, but the first five things on the list might be $40 or $50 million. So you know you can't do that. So you find other things that are maybe a little bit lower down on the list that might be $50,000 or $60,000 or $70,000, or maybe a couple million dollars, that you can fit in there, that you can have, that you have the bond capacity to do in that year, and that sort of thing. So, you know, I think it's probably too simplistic to compare one project to another. I think it's, you have this big, robust puzzle that you're really sitting around and trying to figure out how everything fits together, with a subjective component of what we want to do, with being informed by the objective scoring system and knowing what we can actually pay for. So it's, you know, it's really not that simple.
Thank you.
Are these mic spots? Can you guys hear us up there? Okay.
I can hear yourself. I just can't hear myself.
Vice Mayor Dola.
Thank you, Councilmember Perro. I am happy to see number 6 and 7 in there. I think that, as a city, we talk about livability, and I think that we really need to consider our environmental footprint. And also, I think, you know, we want better streets, nice roads, attractive places for people to live and walk on, and so I'm happy it's there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Walder.
Again, thank you for the report. I sit on this PDC committee as well, and so it did come before us. And I think it's so helpful to have a measurable system. I mean, there's no perfect thing we do. There's no perfect grading system, even in school. I could argue with some of my teachers about some of my grades. So there's no perfect grading system, and some of these are subjective, but at least we have a standard to work with and to work from. So I appreciate that, bringing it forward. So when a person brings certain situations or fake news or certain things that they think may be better, at least we have some standards that we can go by as a baseline that we can use. So I'm appreciative to your staff members for getting this together, at least we have a baseline that we can use going forward. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Ms. Hart also. Thank you for the presentation. The first time I saw this, when you were not able to present the last time you were ready, I looked at it, and I was totally baffled by everything that was in there and how it worked. But with a second look, I think I understand a little bit better. I do respect and recognize the expertise of those who came together and established the percentage weighting system. It has about a 16% differential between the highest weighted item and the lowest weighted item. But one thing that is of interest to me is the number 4 and number 5. Community impact is weighted at 13%, and economic development at 11%. And of course, both of those are very important, but why would community impact outside of transportation, for example, be 2% more than economic development, which is something that we hold very important in our priorities?
I think that's a good question. Staff developed this over a period of probably three or four or five meetings, and there was a lot of debate and discussion about how to weight these. I think we referred to it in PDC as sausage making. It's not pretty, but you have to, you just finally come to a conclusion. I respect that maybe, maybe those should be flipped, and I think that's something we could look at, certainly, but yeah, there was just a lot of debate and discussion about this, and this is what we landed on, based on our expertise in the room. And you can, you can differ with that, but this is what we landed on as how we decided to weight things. I agree. I could see, and we had a lot of debate and discussion in PDC about that as well.
Okay. Can you succinctly explain how you arrived at the 13 versus, the 11 versus 13?
I can't succinctly explain that now because it was probably about three, two or three years ago, and it was through a lot of debate and discussion. There was, it was just in the room, having lunch, getting pizzas, and pounding it out. So there, really, again, it was, there was some subjectivity. There is no doubt. It was subjectivity based on staff expertise, based on our city engineer, based on our city engineer, myself, my deputy, our financial analyst that was in the room as well. This is what we came up with, and that's why we went to PDC to get input, was just to see, does this meet council's needs?
I really appreciate that, and I understand the nuance between the 2% is not all that much in the whole scheme of things. Was there a discussion about perhaps lowering the weighting of some of the other items, instead of 6%, move one of those to 5%, and then adding those percentages to the economic development, so they're both 13% rather than flipping them?
We did not discuss that. However, I will tell you that I think if you're referring to items 6 and 7, which are kind of the softer, what might consider beautification, but this is actually, some of this stuff is actually required in VDOT standards anymore, and certainly stormwater and various things is required. So, you know, I think that we felt like it needed to stay in here and felt like it was an important component. We actually took, there was a criteria for council-approved document that I think was at like 1% or 2%, and we eliminated that particular criteria, and I believe that we put it to environment and beautification, if I remember correctly. That was a recommendation of PDC, and so we added some points to that based on the recommendation of PDC.
Okay. Thank you. And I was not talking so much about eliminating a category, but lowering the percentage of a category so as to add 1% from two categories to the economic impact. And, but anyway, that's...
Again, I think it's a valid point, and we can certainly look at that. I will tell you that for this year, we're running out of time. Our CIP is due the end of October, so it might have to be a work in progress, but we will make a note of that for sure.
Again, I appreciate the collective effort. Very good.
Councilmember Wright, thank you.
You had a hand in creating it. And I also, just to add on to 6 and 7, I think those are actually, I don't think there's anything soft about them. I think they're really important elements to take into account when, when scoring a project. On number 4, community impact, you know, it says here, "The rating is a reflection of the transformative nature of the project," which sounds pretty, you know, kind of loose to me, kind of pretty flexible. I'm not entirely sure how to, so how do you, how do you actually arrive? I mean, how do you, is there a, is there a sub-equation in there where you, you plug in certain points for certain things? How do you arrive at, at community impact? How do you discern what community impact is?
Well, and that's, that's interesting, and I agree with you. In a way, community impact is a part of economic development as well, if you kind of see some of the factors in there are very much economic development. If I remember correctly, we were under a different strategic plan. We had, and I believe this was before you were on city council, we had a strategic plan with... of the factors in there are very much economic development. If I remember correctly, we were under a different strategic plan. We had, and I believe this was before you were on city council, we had a strategic plan with 12 pillars in it, and we had taken, I believe there was a group of pillars, that collectively, we pulled all into community impact. So we were trying to go, again, on an approved council plan that you, you as city council saw in a retreat, and take that input as being approved, and we created this community impact criteria based on an old strategic plan from, that we had been under and had been using.
So how's it work now?
We are still under that old plan until we get the Lynchburg Plan approved, and then we will see how the Lynchburg Plan fits into our criteria.
12 pillars, and, oh, it's hit six of them, so it gets a 50% score on community impact or something?
Correct, yes.
I see, okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any further questions from Ms. Hart? This is an information item, so thank you very much, and the staff that helped put this together, so thank you. All right, next, at our discussion this morning, and so I'll ask council if it's okay. Number two is thriving city update, number three is the fire department standard of cover, community risk reduction, and we discussed this morning switching the two so that we could bring forth the Chief Wormser to present his discussion item first, giving it more time and making sure that he was able to explain it beforehand. Since we've seen the thriving city before, and it's an update, we wanted to give a little time in case council had questions on the fire department standard of cover. So Chief Wormser, if it's all right with council, I just switched that agenda item for us.
Okay, I didn't remember talking about it, okay.
Okay. Right. I'm asking, yeah, right now, if that's all right, to switch that item for, okay. Thank you. Chief Wormser, please come up next.
Let me ask you, while he's coming up. I'm having trouble hearing myself. Are the volumes at the normal level? Really? You sound soft everywhere.
What'd you say?
Speak up.
Yes, that was because he's pushing number six.
Okay. Maybe I'm going deaf, I know I'm going blind, I just, I need to wear reading glasses soon.
Can you speak up?
Can you hear me?
Hi, thank you, Chief Wormser, and welcome.
Good evening. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor. Thank you, members of council. It's my honor to be here today to present to you the fire department standard of cover and community risk assessment, and I want to thank you all for taking the time to review the document before tonight, and then listening to our conversation as we move forward. This is instrumental in ensuring that we can move forward with the accreditation process of our department, and I want to thank both the city manager, the deputy city manager, along with the assistant city manager for all of their support in this process. So the purpose of tonight is to provide council with an overview of our standard of cover, and what the standard of cover is, is it's a document that supports what we do every day, it articulates in a transparent way the great work that the fire department does on a daily basis. So tonight, we'd like to seek your approval to adopt the standard of cover as it is written. You're going to hear some things as we move through the process tonight about why that's necessary for the accreditation process, and how this is a living document, so it changes. That doesn't mean that what you're adopting, or what you say tonight, or agree to tonight, is something that we have to do for the rest of our lives in perpetuity. It just means that we agree tonight that this document is the way that we want to move forward as a department and as a community. So we're going to go over the recent changes to the standard of cover. We're going to talk about the relationship to accreditation, and how the standard of cover is really sort of the jumping off point for our accreditation process. The, the important thing here is that the standard of cover is predicated on all the services that we deliver, and a direct correlation to that is the community risk assessment, which we will also provide you tonight, which drives the community risk reduction efforts that we as a department engage with our stakeholders and our community. The final steps, or the next thing you see there is the standard of cover and the data analysis, and, you know, just want to mention that there are about 4 million points of data that we've been reviewing over the last three years, in how our department operates, and what services we provide to our community, and we want to make sure that we continue those elements, and make sure that we provide the best possible outcomes for our citizens. So let's take a look at a little bit about our response times. The standard of cover, sorry, the standard of cover was first adopted in 2006 by council, and to our recollection, has not been backed since then. We have been an accredited department for some time, but the, to our recollection, our knowledge of the subject, the standard of cover has not been backed. So it's a good opportunity to bring this back before you, in addition to the big changes that have been made with the community risk assessment portion. These are the documents by which we are going to deliver our service, and so it's important to note that the data is based on fact, but it has a service-driven methodology. So this is not just about reading data, making data, do something that we needed to do. This is about living it every day, and making sure that we're doing the best for our citizens every day. It does evaluate our system benchmarks and baselines, and so this is where we're going to really get into the meat of the matter, in that the standard of cover articulates the service delivery needs within the community and the department, and the response information. And what you will see here today is the difference between a benchmark, which is sort of a standard that we'd like to achieve, that many departments would like to achieve, but then our baseline, which is what we actually do every day, and how we measure ourselves. So the first thing we're going to discuss is the benchmarks, and so NFPA 1710 is a big document that describes a bunch of different things about fire service, and one of the things that it describes is response times. And so what you see before you here in this particular slide are the benchmarks for NFPA 1710. As I said, it isn't, it is a standard, it's not something that we have to adopt. Many departments, in fact, don't adopt this type of standard for a lot of different reasons. In our city, the reason why this is a challenge for us is for topography, geography, and station locations. So we have quite the challenge with the city of Seven Hills to meet some of these benchmarks. And so, again, they're not required, it's just a way that we can measure ourselves against what the best practices are around the country. So what we then choose to do as part of the accreditation process is look at our baselines. What are we actually doing for call processing, for travel time, turnout time, and then what we call the effective response force, or the ERF? And so, take a minute to describe a little bit of each one of those. So the call processing time is the time, at the point of time that the dispatcher receives the call, to the time that they actually dispatch the call to the fire department. The turnout time is the point of time where the fire department receives the call at the station, and then marks en route to the scene. So until the wheels are moving, that, that clock is continuing to run. So that's a measurement directly on us, and how fast we can get ready once we receive that notification. Yes, sir?
So baseline for the call processing, so somebody calls 911, and they don't call you for another 2 minutes and 30 seconds? I thought it was kind of almost instantaneous.
It is not instantaneous, and so we're going to discuss a little bit about what that means. And so, you're correct in that our current baseline, in other words, we don't want to go over 2 minutes and 30 seconds, that's our current baseline. It's not where we want to be, it's just our current baseline. It's where we articulate that we are achieving that point currently, we obviously want to be well below the baseline. So we recognize that call processing is a current, you know, challenge that needs to be addressed, there's no doubt.
So with that, obviously, that's a different department than the fire department.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's the EMS, or not EMS, the 911. So is there, so it's less than two and a half minutes?
Correct.
Like?
Yeah, so we're going to talk about, so we will get to exactly what it is. It also is different, so you're going to see in just a few minutes how we break this out by call type, as we do a thorough analysis of what we're doing across the system every day and across our city. And so we do break that out, so this is just a baseline. You're going to see processing times that are much less than this. This is just, we want to be below 2 minutes and 30 seconds.
So it says, calls 911, and then they choose not to call you for another two and a half minutes, and it should have nothing to do with the fire department?
Correct.
Right? I mean, it's...
But it's a measurement tool that we have to use. That's correct. That's correct. So we'll spend a few minutes talking about the effective response force. So we recently changed our methodology in how we respond to calls, that's part of this entire risk assessment and standard of cover, in that we're sending more resources to incidents. And so we used a different resource allocation model, which caused our ERF to go up a little bit. That doesn't necessarily mean that's a bad thing. Again, it's just a measurement point, it's just a point in time that we're measuring, and that's how we're going to essentially grade ourselves in the future as we move forward. So you notice that was for the fire responses, we also have the same thing for EMS responses, and those are located here, and you can read those in your document, I won't walk you through all of those. I will, again, point out EMS responses, because we do emergency medical dispatching, tend to be more expansive, so it tends to take a little bit more time to get the call out, and the reason for that is the call taker is providing emergency care right to the citizen at that very moment when they call 911. But again, we have had some discussions with Department of Emergency Services about ways that we can improve these times for the good of our citizens, and, you know, to get a better positive outcome.
Yes, sir.
Nope, no problem.
So those, those are supposedly concurrent, so they're not, you know, waiting for one for the other when they're doing the emergency medical dispatch. I thought the emergency medical dispatch, they're doing it over the telephone, helping the people take care of a problem, while at the same time they're already contacting police or fire, aren't they concurrent?
They are not always concurrent, and again, when you look at the document towards the end, as we, as we go, as we walk you through it, you'll see how those times, again, change. Don't, don't take the 2 minutes and 30 seconds as that's what we're doing every time, it's not what we're doing every time. In some cases, we're at a minute, in some cases, we're a little more than a minute, in some cases, we might even be a little less than a minute. So we're going to talk a little bit in a minute, to, just to put it in perspective, about 90th percentile. So all of this is graded on what we have to do 90% of the time, that's a standard for accreditation. So it's just saying that 90% of the time, we're going to do it in less than 2 minutes and 30 seconds, as far as call processing goes. So all of those times represent that same standard. 90% of the time, we're going to do it at least, or at the most, this fast. So it's a little hard, I'm going to show you a graph here in a few minutes that maybe will help sort of bring that together for you. But again, it's not something that we're, we're not always at 2 minutes and 30 seconds for call processing, we just don't want to go over that point. There are plenty of ways that we go over that, we're going to talk about some anomalies, the tornado, some significant weather events that we've had, those are all things that call, those call, cause those call processing times to increase dramatically, frankly. But we can pull from this data, from this data set, any number of things, and again, you'll see in later on in the document, as you read through it, that, you know, high-risk EMS calls, our call processing time is much less, because concurrently, those things are happening all together at the same time. So one of the big things that's a difference in this particular standard of cover, as opposed to ones that we've previously submitted, is this has a huge community risk reduction aspect. So we are, we have been conducting for quite some time a large community risk reduction analysis of what our community looks like, what our responses are like, what our response times are. We've been using a lot of data points, again, about 4 million pieces of data to determine things about our demographics, where we're engaging with our citizens, and our overall response statistics, in an effort to make sure that we're properly telling our story and we're delivering the service that the citizens need. So when you combine this with the standard of cover, you provide a fact-based driven look at our services. So what you see every day, what you see before you is the real data, we've obtained the raw data, we've compiled it, made it sort of real in a, in a, in a way that we can all understand it, or at least hope to understand it, that provides the driver for the services that we deliver, and then provides us with a fact-based resource allocation model, so that we make sure that we're getting the correct services to the correct citizens at the correct time. This is all about right sizing, it's all about right place, right time, and that's what makes it sustainable and thoughtful for the future, so that we can continue to sort of evolve and move and, you know, be a little bit subjective, to gain Al's point earlier, about what we're doing, because there is some subjectivity here. It is a changing, living document. We, as a matter of fact, had a conversation with the gentleman who's been helping us with our process just this morning, and from this morning's conversation, the document has already changed again, so we've added a few things to it, just to sort of better tell our story.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So how do you, how are you monitoring this? Using software or any other sort of tool, like Microsoft Power BI or anything, to do an active dashboard, so you can monitor your metrics on an active basis?
That's a great question. So we are currently monitoring it by hand, unfortunately, because we don't have a great way, a great program that can help us analyze our data. Yeah, so we're counting, that's right, yeah, so I take, yeah, so there is that challenge. So what we do is we're, we're pulling data in, we use the data, we share data analysts with other city departments, and so that data analyst goes into our systems, pulls the data that we need, sends it to us in a format in which, you know, is something that we can manipulate and, and work with, and then we organize it based on our needs. And so that's how we end up with, you know, more than 4 million points of data. So surely, and one of the things that we do identify in our accreditation documents is that we need a better system for analyzing our data, because currently, we do that, you know, in spreadsheets by hand, we have somebody that, you know, goes in, pulls the data out on his own, and then helps us develop spreadsheets and graphs. Not the best way to do it, but it works. So moving forward, for your support in the accreditation process, as I've talked about, it's about continuous improvement, and as you look through the packet that we've provided you, you'll understand that we're providing our community with a more effective and, effective and efficient response with each passing year. So you'll see, as we've articulated in the document, between 2016 and now, our response times are improving, call processing times are improving, turnout times are improving, things are getting much better from where we were several years ago. And, and again, it's part of a continuous, you know, improvement process, we want to continue that, that goal. We want to continue to be able to lower our baselines, and, you know, get closer to achieving the standard of best practices through NFPA 1710. So as we move forward, these documents will provide that validation that we need, identify the areas of improvement, and we own what we do. This is, you know, a thoughtful and sustainable approach to making sure that we're providing our citizens with the best outcomes possible. The standard of cover, and the thing that you see before you, is only one small portion of, of what we are doing as far as our accreditation process. There's also the facilities plan, which you all have in front of you, there's also our strategic plan, and an additional several hundred-page document that describes to the evaluators when they come here to our city, all of this, all of the services that we do. What you see before you in the standard of cover is just that synopsis of all of those other documents combined. So this is a little bit of a timeline of events, and where we were and where we are currently. So we started accreditation in February 2019, we submitted our, we have been submitting our documents this month, in August and in September, and we are moving, we hope, to applicant, from candidate status, I'm sorry, from applicant status to candidate status. So our current official status is applicant, and so we have been working with a consultant who works with the accrediting body, and once we are approved, we will move to a candidate status, at which point, a site visit of one to three peers will, a site visit of three peers will be here in one to three months, to visit for several days, to validate what we've been doing, and what we say that we're doing every day. And our hope is that by March of 2020, we will be a fully accredited department. Obviously, there are lots of things that we have to do between now and then, but we have a great team assembled that's going to help us get there. So we'll talk a little bit about our risk assessment methodology. Again, I alluded to this a little bit earlier in the presentation, so we've changed a lot about just responding to a call. Somebody calls 911, and we just go there. It's somebody's house, it's somebody, somebody's business, but we didn't know anything really about what that house or business was like. And so we changed our methodology, and so one of the things we did is we looked at target hazard classification as a way to articulate properly in a transparent way what we do, what we respond to every day. And so what you see before you is the entire map of the city that shows the small, the moderate hazards, the special hazards, and the medium hazards. So we also did the same thing then for EMS, and again, in an effort to be transparent, we wanted to make sure that we were, you know, telling our story in an appropriate and effective way, and so the hazard classifications for fire-related incidents or fire-related structures and responses are based on occupancy type, construction type, and economic impact. It's important to know that we've been working collaboratively, sort of behind the scenes, with folks from community planning and development, the city assessor's office, as well as information technology and GIS, in order to develop this plan as we move forward. You know, they're instrumental in helping us achieve what we need to do from a response standpoint, because they have a lot of the data, and, you know, their collaboration with us is, you know, tremendously important as we move forward and as we all work together in a collaborative manner. So we then looked at critical tasking, and so these are the things that accreditation says that we must do when we arrive on the scene every time, and they vary from call type to call type, and that document is also in front of you, and you can refer to that. But it tells you, you know, who has to pump the fire, it tells you how many people you're going to need to be on an attack line, how you're going to establish a water supply, it's going to tell you how you're going to perform CPR, all of those things, and how many people that it takes. And so we've identified all of those people in what we call our critical task analysis, and did some critical tasking that identifies for each call type what these folks are supposed to be doing, what our great members are doing. So again, 4 million data points over three years, and we're going to walk you through sort of an example of what that looks like, and how you can sort of navigate the document as you move forward, that evaluates the response times, response... times, response nature codes, and our total overall response and performance across the So sort of an important point here before we move into some nuts and bolts of the matter. You know, regardless of the outcome, our folks are doing great work every day. We're providing an incredibly prompt and skilled service. We are using technology to our advantage, and we're doing great work, but that does not come without its challenges. Our call volume is certainly trending up. We are spending more time on calls, as we have discussed previously in previous months, due to the high demand for skilled workers. Our workforce does a great job. They are highly trained. And because they are highly trained, it takes us much longer to be on a call. Gone are the days that we just go to your house or your place of business and just take you to the hospital. Gone are the days that we go to your house or your place of business when you have some sort of other emergency and we just sort of, you know, mitigate the situation and leave. We do many more things than that. And so as a result of that, we have certainly some challenges with how long it takes us to process a call from start to finish. But overall, our service delivery outcomes remain strong. And we're going to go over what those are and some of the key points of those here in just a minute. So this is a quick breakdown of what we have been doing for the past three years. And what this particular slide shows you is the amount of responses that we go on that are EMS-related in the, sorry, in fire-related in the categories that accreditation requires us to report. So the one thing I do want to point out in this particular slide is that car fires are listed in a structure fire category. So 44% of non-wildland fires is what we do every day as a department. So those are, those are fires that occur in a structure, in a car, electrical shorts in a structure, all of these, you know, a smoke smell in a structure all fall into that category. So the fire alarms are obviously what they are, fire alarms. An alarm goes off in your business or a smoke alarm goes off in your home. Hazardous materials, technical rescue, wildland, and then other hazards. So the one thing I want to point out about other hazards, it's 6% of what we do in 2016 versus 20% in what we did in 2018. Any idea why? For a little interactive, it's got to be the, absolutely. So it's the result of the storms that we had that certainly caused our other hazards category to go up. So we do a lot of things for our city that other localities may not. We go to trees down, we go to power lines down, we go to assess situations in basements where there might be flooding. So there's a lot of extra and ancillary services that we provide and are just happy to do so, but they fall into this other hazards category. So when we have large events, that other hazards category continues to go up.
If I might interject a little bit, sometimes pie charts can be a little misleading because it doesn't give you a good perspective. Yes, a certain percentage, but for instance, in 18, 25% of our calls were structure fires, whereas it was 44% of the calls were structure fires in 2016. But is it really the same number of structure calls? Did we just have more calls in 18 because of the, because of the storms?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a great question. It is a little misleading. So it is a way that we want to articulate it differently than what you see in the standard of cover document. And I can refer you to the correct page here in just a minute, but it tells you exactly the number of fire calls and responses by number. Just another way to report it.
So now, just to ask you, are we, is it, are the number of structure calls consistent, increasing or decreasing over this time period?
They are consistent. When I use the word consistent, by the way, I, I say that that's an increase of less than 50. So they do increase slightly, but they're, but they're, so there's a very, very slight increase, but, but it's really negligible at best. Where we've seen the largest increase is certainly in our EMS-related calls.
Yeah, I'll agree with that. We'll get that later.
Yep.
Is that recent?
So that's a recent change. So we can, and we can break it out either way. Yeah. So, yeah, we can add that into the pie chart to make that different. We can add that as a separate pie chart. There's about, you know, any number of dozen ways that we can report on it. Again, this is in an effort to meet the accreditation standard and the way in which they want to see it.
These charts, just with, because the smoothing effect would, would totally skew them then, I imagine.
I, no, because we-
That you had the one year. If you didn't have, you know, the, changing the reporting of structure fire that used to be a house versus structure fire now is houses and cars.
I, I agree with, with the chief. You know, this, this is for the accreditation standards. I guess I'm, what I'm thinking about as I'm looking at these is, should this affect our policymaking? Are we getting a larger number of, of structure fires or these other services? Was it not the storm? Was it something else? So I think if we look at these, this data from a policy and a policymaking perspective, then Mr. Helgason's right. We need to, we need to adjust for other factors. But as you said, this is the way it's being reported for-
Just a lost overview, a, a quick synopsis and a snapshot in time. Again, a lot of this information is already in the document that's before you. This is in the presentation, just to give you that sort of brief synopsis. We can certainly walk through some of the elements of the document. We can also provide you car fire information or whatever other information that you would like as far as total responses. That's not a problem.
So I'm jumping ahead of you now on the EMS responses. Is the total number of low-risk responses, is this an indicator for us that there should be some policy changes in low risk? Or is, I'd love, I'd love, if you would explain that as you go through.
So, so what you see before you is the EMS responses. And so we'll spend a little bit of time talking about what this means. And it may be repetitive because it does appear in, again, another slide, but since you asked now, we'll go ahead and review it. So low-risk EMS responses are EMS responses that are coded as omega, alpha, and bravo level responses. And so that's a code by EMD, Emergency Medical Dispatching, that codes the response based on a variety litany of factors, which is a whole nother, you know, presentation. So moderate risk, what we do the most of every day are what we call our Charlie level responses and our Delta level responses. So these are typically things like chest pain, shortness of breath, stroke, car accidents are Charlie, Delta level responses. Those are some examples of what those responses look like. And then finally, high-risk responses are what we call our echo level responses. These are typically reserved for things like amputations or some other catastrophic single injury incident where somebody is maybe entrapped in a machine or something like that. So they don't account for a large majority of the calls that we run. Again, these are all broken out in the document that we've submitted to you by number so that you know exactly the numbers of calls per year that we do in each category. So to answer your question, there's been a huge shift, as you notice, from the pie chart. So if you look here on the pie chart in 2016, you'll notice that 52% of our calls were moderate risk versus our current situation in 2018 were 55%. So there's been a complete flop. And so what happened is that between 2016 and 2018, probably towards the end of 2017, according to our data, we made a complete change in EMD. So EMD at that point had been in place for several years, and we went and did an overhaul of the entire EMD system to make sure that we were doing our due diligence for our community. And so that's why you see a complete flop, you know, a complete turnaround in the numbers and almost an identical swap of what's happening. And that's because we were able to more properly articulate, again, using a proper resource allocation model, making sure that we're getting the right equipment to the right call. And so it was just a complete turnaround. So we're still running more calls, okay? But they're of a different nature code because we've changed our response level. So the difference there is for a low-risk call, depending on the situation, you get a fire truck or an ambulance, whichever is closest. If you have a Charlie or Delta level call, a moderate risk call, you get both, a fire truck and an ambulance. And then for a high-risk call, you get a fire truck, an ambulance, and then any number of other things after that, supervisors and maybe a second medic unit, and the list goes on and on. So, but the reason for the flip is because we adjusted the way we were using EMD. We worked with Department of Emergency Services, adjusted the way we were using EMD, ensuring that we were, again, providing our citizens with the best possible outcome. So this goes back to Councilmember Helgason's point about response times. And so what you see here is a graph showing response times over time. I think what's important to note about this is that if you look, the black line represents our baseline. And you can see in 2018 how we have begun to finally bring ourselves below the baseline, which is where we want to be. You can see in 2016 and 2017, we were not where we needed to be. And so we've begun that continuous improvement. Things are, not that things were bad, frankly, things were good. Things are getting better. You know, service delivery is getting better. There are lots of factors that go into why that is. Resource allocation, construction, weather, all of these things are all things that we're analyzing consistently to make sure that we're providing, again, our community with the best possible outcomes. And then EMS response time, just a huge difference. And so if you remember, almost two years ago now, we started a new program called Pulse Point. And so one of the things, things that have happened as a result of Pulse Point is that we receive our information faster because it's automated. And so that's one of the things that we're looking at with Department of Emergency Services is how we can automate more systems and use technology to our advantage to increase our efficiency. And so you'll notice for 2000, you'll notice for EMS response times, we have consistently been below the baseline except for call processing, obviously. But as we continue to evolve and continue to work towards continuous improvement, you will see that we are dropping those response times dramatically, frankly. And so we're achieving bench, we're achieving our baselines, making sure that we are, again, delivering the service in the best possible fashion, in the most efficient way possible. Does that help answer your question a little bit?
My question is kind of, you know, when you have two different departments, so you, somebody calls 911 and they don't call you for another five minutes. That shouldn't affect your response time because you're responding as quick as you get the call.
Sure.
And so if, if the bottleneck is at the 911 center where they're, I don't know if I'm reading this correctly, but some of these things look like it's 220 seconds until they call you, which is quite a bit of time, especially when you're getting there. You're getting the call, getting the people, getting suited up, getting in the trucks, and getting over there within eight minutes. That seems like a lot of time on the telephone. Maybe I'm, is there a bottleneck there or something that's from a policy standpoint? Or is that, am I reading this wrong?
So I would say that, you know, certainly, I appreciate the fact that, you know, we don't work in Department of Emergency Services. I know they've had their own share of challenges. I have discussed this with their director and, you know, she's aware of the circumstances. Again, it's not something that is happening all of the time. It's, it's a grade that we're using. It's 90%. Doesn't mean that 90% of the time, we're 220 seconds for a call processing time. It means that's the maximum that we want to be at at 90%. So our, our processing times, as you look through the document, and we'll walk you through that in just a minute, are, are lower than that in a lot of cases. So it is a situation where somebody's calling 911, the dispatcher is taking information, they're providing that dispatch to us, and then they're continuing the process of, of EMD. It's just a point in time. So one of the things that we did as an example to, you know, sort of narrow that gap, is we no longer tone all of the stations individually. We tone them together. So we save about, we save the citizens about 28 seconds in a multi-unit response by toning the stations once, all of them together, versus toning three or four different stations because each set of tones takes eight seconds. So if you do some quick math, you know, if you have three, five, three different stations going to a call, whatever the call is, and eight seconds for three stations is 24 seconds, you do it once, you've just saved the citizen 16 seconds. Seconds matter. And so we certainly are trying to do everything we can to make sure that we're impacting that service and providing that best possible outcome as quickly as possible. So are there some challenges? There certainly are some challenges. Is, are there things that we need to get better at? Sure, that's exactly what this process is about. It's about making sure that we're providing our citizens, we're putting our money where our mouth is, we're providing our citizens with the best possible outcome, and we're looking for ways to provide some improvement.
And what I would think that seems pretty eye-opening is, you know, when you put high risk and it's, and it's in the zero or 1%, but then you, you call heart attacks and, and things as a, car accidents and, you know, as a moderate risk, I guess that kind of puts it in perspective. That's, a lot of times we'd think that's pretty high risk, you know, you're having a heart attack, but-
And it is certainly high risk.
Yeah, to the person.
You know, it's just how you articulate it. And certainly, we could, you know, manipulate or change the data to show one thing versus another. You know, at the end of the day, the outcome for us remains the same. We want to provide the best possible resource as soon as possible to every citizen. And so the best way to articulate that is by using a transparent process and the consistent process based on what's already in place. So on the next slide, you see one of the big points that accreditation looks at, the two big points are property loss and return of circulation. So we're very proud of the fact, taking return of circulation first, that we have a return of circulation rate currently today of 52%. Last year is 51%. And so that is twice the national average, I'm proud to say. So that means in the city of Lynchburg, if you have a cardiac arrest event at your home, despite all of the other things that are going on in the city, you have a 52% chance of surviving. That is well over twice the national average, and that is just outstanding. Our folks do great work every day to make sure from the time of call and they receive CPR instructions from the Department of Emergency Services to the time we arrive on the scene, to the time that we arrive at the hospital. So there's a variety of different things that we utilize in order to make sure those outcomes are very positive. Our property loss rates, you can see we've had some challenges there. So we've articulated there that two situations. In 2016, we had a business on Lakeside Drive that was partially destroyed, frankly. And they're back up and running now. And then in 2018, we had three significant fire losses in addition to our changes in methodology. So because of the way we report things now, we have a little bit of a change in methodology in how we are providing or reporting total dollar losses over time. And then finally, I wanted to show you a service map that talks a little bit about medic units. So this is our current situation with medic units, our four and eight-minute travel time, similar to the slide previously where it was stationed four-minute and eight-minute travel time. You know, the great thing about what we do at the fire department is we can get to your home or your place of business more than 99% of the time in less than eight minutes, the first arriving unit. So it doesn't matter where you live, doesn't matter where you are, we can provide you a great service 90, a little over 99% of the time in less than eight minutes. Obviously, that number does drop a little bit in, for four-minute responses. And just taking you back briefly, our four-minute response map looks like this over here. So it is a little bit less. Again, not necessarily something that anybody's done wrong. It's our challenges with geography and topography, unfortunately. So let's look at some of the other facts that we have here. So as we started analyzing the data, we thought this was kind of interesting, some of the important points. And there are tons of important points, and I could stand up here and talk to you all for hours about the great things that we've discovered and things that we want to do in the future. But we discovered that the least busiest census tract is the University of Lynchburg at less than 100 calls per year, every year. So that's Census Tract 2.03. And there is rarely, if ever, a fire-related response in that census tract, which thought was interesting. The most change over time, as you can imagine, the Census Tract 14 around Liberty University, that also includes parts of Ward's Road. It's had a 41% increase in call volume over the last three years. That's a tremendous amount of call volume increase. And then to Councilmember Perro's point earlier, what does that really mean? Well, that really only means it's, in 2018, we only ran 714 calls in Census Tract 14. So it's to your point.
I am not being facetious there.
I am not being facetious. That is a-
Only 714.
Correct. So, but it's to your point, as I said, we were going to get back to your point about, you know, the pie graphs and percentages. It's a 41% increase over time in three years, but we only ran 714 calls in that census tract in 2018. So it's just an interesting dichotomy of percentages versus, you know, reality, what's really happening every day. So 2000, in Oak Forest Road, Census Tract 2.02, there's been a 20% increase in call volume over the last three years. We thought that was very interesting. There's not a lot of construction, there's not a lot of new development going on there, yet we are very busy in that area. And then finally, Census Tract 19, initially, when we looked at this, we sort of thought, well, what in the world, why is Census Tract 19 so busy? Because it is the second busiest census tract in the city. So Census Tract 19 is Tyriana is what we first thought about. Well, then, we also then took a harder look at what was happening there. And it's Florida Avenue, it's Campbell Avenue. So it's really an extension of, you know, what is the most populated, densely populated area in the city, accounting for about 1,570 calls in 2018. So it is the second busiest tract behind, behind the city center. Yes, sir?
With that, seeing that, how that points out, and this now is to Gaynell behind you, we just discussed a minute ago about transportation improvements and, and how I talked about a minute ago about how I don't like to see Campbell Avenue be on a road diet, and I don't think the fire services or the people that live back there would like to see that as a road diet either. Because when you got the second busiest tract and you're trying to go down Campbell Avenue, I think we should put a little more high position in the score for a public safety and the ability, because if you have one lane and you got a truck and medic and trying to get down there and people pulling over, you know, I think our scoring system, you need to kind of reflect that, Gaynell somewhat, to have the, you know, I'd much rather see a public safety score on there than a beautification or a road diet kind of score, because that actually negates the benefits that they're trying to do by having a, a quick time turnaround. So thank you.
I think from a management perspective, it'd be really interesting to see what the per capita call is per census tract. I figured you had.
We're going to walk you through that here in just a minute. So moving forward, what do we need? Well, we need a lot of things, frankly, but we're just going to talk about these four things currently. We need you all to, you know, we request respectfully that you all approve the document so that we can move forward with our accreditation process. We're hoping for a successful completion, obviously, when the site visit occurs and we have our peers come and assess what we are doing every day. And we want to make sure that you all understand that this is a living document, that, you know, this document is changing. Doesn't mean, we're not here to pull the wool over your eyes. We're here to, you know, describe to you in great detail about what we do every day and continue this conversation, this dialogue about the great work that we're doing for our community. It's not to say in six months that we're going to come back and say, oh, well, turns out that, you know, two minutes and 30 seconds wasn't enough, we need five minutes, or we need 20 minutes. That's not what it's about at all. It's about making sure that we're making continuous progress towards achieving what our goals might be. So with that, anybody have any questions before we sort of walk through a couple of other points in the document that I've sent you?
Could I make a quick point? So I think before we move forward, I think it's valuable to express and, and point out the quality of the work that Chief, the Chief Wormser and his team has done in this work. You know, you, you can get reaccredited and do all this work, and you can just check boxes and get, do these documents and make them happen. But the chief and his team have really gone above and beyond, I think, to do this the right way so that we are being self-reflective, and so that we're using this, this document and this tool to make our service better in the long run. So I think, I think there's really a lot of value in that, and so I really want to thank you for that.
Well, I couldn't do it without the team, and I hadn't made my closing remarks, but I do want to point out that some members of the team are here tonight, Deputy Chief Lipscomb, Deputy Chief Wright, and our Fire Administrative Manager, Annette Pettijohn. We've also had, obviously, a wide variety of folks that have been helping us out. I've mentioned Kent White and his group at Community Planning and Development, Gaynell, and her group at Public Works, in addition to folks at GIS, Allison Johnson and her staff, and then folks at Information Technology. We are certainly, you know, working in a very collaborative manner, stepping way outside where we have normally been acting and working, and making sure that we're making our community a better place through our efforts. So we appreciate their efforts, and, and I couldn't do this without that great team behind me, so thank you. Oh, and Marjett's back there, too. Forgot about Marjett. She'll tell me how, she always gets forgotten.
Any questions, Councilmembers, before he proceeds? How, oh, go ahead.
I don't have any questions. I think he's going to start a job in communicating this information to us. Thank you very much.
It's a lot to take in, in a short amount of time. I certainly recognize that. Obviously, we're all available for, you know, comments and questions that may come later. We certainly understand that that's part of the process. You know, when we have not been to you in this type of context before and then come at you with, you know, several hundred pages of information, it's hard to digest that all at one time with all of the other things that you all have to do. And so we appreciate your time and attention to, to making sure that, you know, we understand what exactly is happening in our city.
Thank you. I know my question, now, it last came to us in 2006, so how often would we expect this to come to us?
This is something that, by my standards, and by the standards of my team, that this should come before you every year. Yes, ma'am? Because that's how we're going to be looking at it. So then, let's talk a little bit about what that looks like for us. So every year, we should be making this very similar presentation to you all, and that's something that we are committed to doing. In addition, I believe somebody asked a little while ago about a dashboard. Somebody asked about that. So we have a live dashboard. Well, it's not currently live, it's in a beta test, but it shows the last three years, and it shows in an interactive map, which we're going to be presenting to leadership team in the coming days, the work that we're doing. So it articulates this in, I can tell you in 2016 how many times Engine Six went on a fire alarm at a business on Wednesday between the hours of 2:00 AM and 4:00 AM. I mean, I could, we can just, it runs the gamut. So we, again, we've made a really thoughtful, sustainable approach to how we're looking at the information to make sure that we're telling our story very effectively, to make sure that we're having a positive outcome for our citizens.
Does it also allow for the year, station chiefs, I don't know if I said that properly, station chiefs to monitor the turnout time at their specific stations?
That's a great question. So it does not currently, so this is new to us, so we've just been working with GIS in order to make this happen. So the current situation is that we can look back at 2016 through 2018 and see all of this information. What we will do in the future, as we continue to refine our process, is that you will be able to, as a station captain, go look at last week's data and see where you need to improve and where you can provide training to the rest of your staff. We have a lot of middle managers that are outside of, you know, our current, our immediate purview because they're scattered about the city, and we want them to have the best possible chance to improve their outcome in their neighborhood. That's very important to us, absolutely. So that's the next, that is the next phase. I don't have a timeline for that yet because we are just rolling this out this week, as a matter of fact. And, and obviously, if you all are interested, we could certainly come back to you with that information and what that looks like for you all.
Thank you for the report, we really appreciate it. Now, is this standard accreditation similar to the least departments as well?
Can you go through accreditation as well?
It is, yes, very similar to their accreditation process. Different body, obviously, different accrediting body, but it is very similar.
Are the other fire departments, they don't have to the same standard or have the same accreditation?
So we, we do have partner agencies in the state that are, that are already accredited, easy for me to say. Overall, there are 276 accredited departments across the world, only 276 out of the 31,000, 32,000-ish departments. And in the state of Virginia, currently, Roanoke is accredited and Charlottesville is accredited.
So not that many at all in our area?
That's correct.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
So this process, this accreditation process, which I think before you became chief, maybe some of the, the paperwork was, was dropped or something, so now we're back on schedule. So it looks like you've moved now from applicant to candidate status for accreditation, and it looks like it'll be complete by next spring? Is that...
Yes, sir. So it's, it's a little bit ambiguous still. I was going to say squishy, probably not the appropriate term, but a little ambiguous still. So we are still currently in applicant status. We will remain there, so we have submitted our final documents, and we will remain there until sometime at the beginning of October. If we are successful, we will move forward then to candidate status, at which point a team leader, a peer assessment team leader, will contact us to let us know some details regarding their travel plans and when they will actually come to visit our department, visit our city, to validate the work that we're doing and the, and the body of work that we've provided to them. So again, this is, and then, so once that process is complete, they will either recommend us or not recommend us, and then they will give us some things regardless, they will give us some things that we're going to need to improve on. We are sure of that. There's no way we're going to get it perfect. We just hope to get it right. And so then, from that point, we will then go sometime in the spring to, our hope is if we get accredited, when we get accredited, to go in the spring before the commission to receive that accreditation.
Okay, so previously, the department was accredited, right?
Correct.
And so just because the paperwork was maybe not complete before with personnel issues?
Yeah, I think there are lots of reasons that we are not accredited currently, but I can tell you...
Maybe, maybe, I guess a paperwork issue more than it is a standard issue and safety for our citizens? Okay.
I think it's both. So I think, I think we had some, some challenges in our department before now, and I think in addition to that, the standards have changed. So again, before, standard of cover was just about our response, the fact that we leave the station, go to your home or business, treat you, take care of your situation, and then go back to the station. Now it is much more, much more broader in scope, yet much more refined in the sense that we have to also assess our community. So we can't just say, yeah, we're doing this, you know, 90% of the time, this quickly. We have a return of circular, return of circulation rate of 52%. We have to show how we're actually achieving that. So that's how we ended up with all this data, with all this community assessment about what's actually happening in our community.
So now, going through all of this, is there a benefit? I mean, other than, sounds good to be in accredited fire department, is there benefits to our citizens? Is it benefits from a safety standpoint, or is that a lot of...
So, so it benefits the community in a lot of ways. So the first way is that it validates what we do every day. So instead of me just getting up here in front of you all, in front of some community group and saying, we provide a great service, look at what we do, it actually validates that. So then we have a peer assessment team that verifies and validates the great work we're doing. It also helps us to improve in the future. So as we continue to look at this document, and we present it to you every year, we're going to show you things that we're not doing as well as we need to be doing. We're going to show you things that we're doing much better than we thought we could. And so we're going to work together in a collaborative manner to make sure that we provide the best possible outcomes, you know, as we move forward for the citizens. The other thing that it will do, hopefully, not to get out in front of our skis too far, but we do hope that there'll be a tangible benefit for our citizens if we can also use this to lower our ISO rating. So there's, there's lots of moving parts. I'm a, I'm a big dreamer. I'm not saying that all of this is going to happen, but I can certainly promise you this, we are going to give it our very best effort.
All right, Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, I want to thank you for a very interesting presentation. I was not aware of all of the data and the efforts that you and your department staff entertain and engage in to accomplish and protect our citizens. The, looking at pages four and five on your presentation, it talks about the call processing time, the turnout time, the travel time, and the effective force time. And it looks like, in terms of processing of the fire call and the processing of the EMS, they're pretty much the same on the baseline. The turnout is a little bit faster for the fire response than for an EMS response, but the travel time is significantly different. For the fire, it looks like it's four and a half minutes, and for the EMS, it's seven minutes. Why would an EMS response take longer than a fire?
That's a great question. So remember that all of the EMS responses in this particular slide are all coupled together regardless of the call type. So the difference is, in one particular call type, we may not be going, we may not have our lights and sirens activated, we may not be in emergency mode, so it may be an Alpha Bravo or an Omega level call that takes a little bit longer to get to. So, you know, traffic, topography, geography. So that's why you see the change. The number is just a representation, it's just a place where we don't want to go past. It doesn't mean that we're providing a, a less than great service every day because we're having to, because we couple all of those call types together. And so you actually will see in the document that we've provided to you, and we'll walk you through that here in just a minute if you, if you so wish, we can tell you specifically for a high-hazard EMS versus a low-hazard EMS, what the differences are in our actual responses. The baseline, by the way, stays the same, but what actually happens changes.
It looks like your effective response time is the same for, for both types of responses, eight minutes?
That's correct. Yeah, so again, just a point in time, we don't want to go over that eight-minute mark. So what it tells us is that if we do go over that eight-minute mark, we've got a challenge, we've got a, something that we need to address, a problem that needs to be fixed. So here's an example. We had a 14-minute response time to an elevator entrapment that we've talked about in this, in our standard of cover. Somebody was trapped in an elevator, they couldn't, you know, the elevator malfunctioned. It happened to be right after the tornado came through town. So it took 14 minutes to get there because we were also processing and working through all of those other calls all at the same time, and so it just takes a little bit of time to figure out which call takes priority, where we need to be, and, and how fast we can get there. So then, of course, you couple that with the challenges after a tornado comes through of not being able to pass on regular streets and, you know, having to find alternative methods to get to where you need to be. And so that skews the data, you know, tremendously. So that's why we look at the 90th percentile, that's why we just set sort of a ceiling, and we just don't want to go past that ceiling. So our numbers, you will see, are much less than that.
But I think this, this is very remarkable, given the, as you said, the topography and geography of our city. You, you may have a neighborhood that's about 200 yards from another neighborhood, but in order to, because all of the streets, all of the streams and creeks that we have, you may have to go two miles around and get to that other neighborhood when it could, you could, you can't get your equipment there any faster. All of this is significant to me, and it was brought home when I had the pleasure of attending the dedication of the Lincom Building, and Councilmember Wilder was there last Thursday. And one of the speakers, the building was dedicated, as you know, as the Barry K. Martin Emergency Services Building there on Cantor's Mountain Road. And one of the speakers talked about 60 years ago, when he was a fire, was in the fire department, and then in the city police department, and he said, in those days, they didn't have walkie-talkies or communication equipment on them. In order to put a call in, they had to go down the street to the coal box and pick up the telephone and make the call, or in the fire department's instance, there, there were fire alarms on telephone poles every two or three blocks. So in where we are now and the protection and security we give our citizens with all of the benefits of technology is remarkable compared to what it was just 60 years ago. And certainly, Barry Martin gets a lot of credit for what he dreamed of and worked for in order to get that Lincom Communications Building going. So thank you and everyone on the force.
Thank you. Councilmember Perro?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just reiterate what you've already heard, excellent presentation. Thank you for catching us up. I think the presentation did a great job of giving us our own baseline of how your, how the department's doing. It sounded like your intention was to come back on an annual basis and give us an update, probably not the full breadth and scope of, of this presentation because the accreditation process, I'm assuming, will be over, nearly over. So I think that it would be beneficial to us, when you do come back for the update, that while this was accreditation-focused, maybe you take a look at more of a policy-focused force? And in that case, if you would show, it sounds like you've got access to remarkable data, but show the data in form of trends, where you're, where you're falling behind and where you want to be, where you're improving on where you want to be, and then, which could help us, inform us when we want to make funding decisions or policy decisions down the road.
So, you know, as you mentioned, that, of course, the data analysis that we have, the data that we have, rather, we've been analyzing with two purposes, and one is to prepare for the next steps, which includes accreditation and obviously, you know, the new budget year that will come upon us very quickly, sooner rather than later. And so we will certainly be, you know, looking at that data to identify trends, to articulate exactly what our needs are moving forward. So absolutely.
Thank you. And I know you were going to step us through the next document. If you could kind of give us the highlights, because I see councilmembers are kind of fingering through those pages. Not just you, no.
Again, I could talk for hours about this stuff. So if you look on page 54, I'll just walk you through one of the census tracts. So it's page 54 of, of your document, or if you're looking at the PDF version, it's actually page 74, if that helps you at all. You should arrive at Census Tract number three, and this will answer several questions that have been asked.
I would say for about 200 and some pages in our document here.
Yeah, and so, and so just in full disclosure, it's 200 and some pages of your document here. There's probably another 300 or 400 pages that we've submitted that we don't, are not required to bring to you, but certainly we'll make that available to everybody online in the future, in addition to the hundreds of other elements that we will have to present that are what we call exhibits or references. So this is quite the undertaking, and so I'm very appreciative of our team that has helped us do this. So if you look at Census Tract number three, you'll notice that each one of these census tracts will, will be outlined just like this. Again, page 74, if you're using your mobile device. If you're not, it's page 54. So your area description is listed there. In this particular case, the tract is comprised of primarily type III and type V residential structures. It includes Lynchburg General Hospital, which is scored as a special target hazard. There's a large strip mall and various businesses and commercial occupancies in this tract. There's a large strip mall and various businesses and commercial occupancies in this tract. So these are things, and these are elements, that we have to provide to the accreditation peer team so that they can articulate, so they can understand really what our city looks like in this particular census tract. On page seventy-five, the next page or page...
I've got fifty-four.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Hey, there's fifty-four.
Seventy-four, yeah, there you go.
Okay, now seventy-four.
Yeah, he's on seventy-five.
Phew, we've got lots of documents, so...
So if you look at the next page after the initial introduction, you'll see the population demographics. And so here's where we start looking at really what the population in that census tract looks like from a demographic standpoint. And so this is real data that we have gleaned from both Marquette Upsher at Economic Development, Kent White at Community Planning and Development, and the Weldon Cooper Center. So we've worked with all of those groups in order to make sure that we capture the necessary data that tells the story about what we do in that particular census tract. If you look then at page seventy... Yep, yes, sir.
So census tract seven, does that coordinate with fire station seven?
It does not. That's a great question. So the city is broken up, I'm going to say nineteen census tract, because guess what the last one is? It's nineteen. It's not really nineteen census tracts, because there's eight-point-oh-one, eight-point-oh-two. It's, somebody else is making those decisions, and so I just go with it, frankly. So there are about nineteen census tracts. There are a few numbers that are skipped, but it does not correlate with a particular fire station. So we don't have the population density that would dictate a fire station in every census tract. I'm sorry?
That is...
Yes. So the next page, you'll see population demographics again. And then the following page, after page, the demographics, page seventy-six on your mobile device, you'll see what the, what the target hazard classification looks like, just color-coded. It's just to help us identify what hazards are in that particular census tract. And so you can see there are a couple of blue areas, which are special hazards. That's the hospital, and so that's also the cancer center and some other nursing home facilities that are located there in that census tract. But you can see the overwhelming majority is a medium-level, medium-level for fires. It typically indicates a home that is less than thirty-five-hundred square feet. So it's pretty broad in nature. Or it could be also duplexes. So the reason why it's a home or a single-family residence of less than thirty-five-hundred square feet is because the duplex, it includes duplexes, which might be obviously fifteen-hundred to two-thousand square feet split into two. And so that's why you get that. So residences that are in red, and obviously you can't tell from this particular picture what is a residence and what is not, but residences that are in red are usually multifamily residences, apartment complexes, more than just a double, more than just a duplex, could be a quadplex, or certainly more families. On the next page, to Councilmember Perrow's point, we look at incident rate in each census tract per one-thousand population. So that tells us a little bit of information about what our trends are and where we're headed. It also talks about percent of change here. And again, each of the census tracts are laid out the same. And then we talk very specifically about each of our call types. So the important thing I want to point out here is that what the percentages that you see correlate with the number of calls. So you see that, as an example, EMS high, number of calls in two thousand and eighteen, in this particular census tract, there were twenty-seven of them in two thousand and eighteen. That accounted for fifteen-point-five-two percent of total high-risk calls for the entire city. There were six-hundred-and-ninety-eight moderate calls, so our bulk of our calls, our moderate level, again, to remind you. And of the six-hundred-and-ninety-eight, that means almost fifteen percent of moderate calls in the city for two thousand and eighteen were in this census tract. So I just wanted to make sure that you understood our methodology behind how we were showing that information.
So a pretty busy census tract.
It is a busy census tract. So this is the busiest census tract. So there's no question about it.
Yeah, your call per thousand looks like it's on a decreasing trend.
It's actually on an increasing trend, well, it's on an increasing trend by two.
I read that in the wrong direction.
That's okay.
Yes. It is on an increasing trend. You're exactly right.
So what is unknown?
That's a great question. So EMS unknown is a call that's called in by an off-duty firefighter or off-duty paramedic, a police officer, a sheriff's deputy, another city worker. So that's a call that's not processed by EMD. And so there's a number of ways that that happens. Here's another challenge with data. It's also a call where it's a traffic accident, just as an example. I don't want to wish bad on anybody, but it's a traffic accident at Tate Springs and Athrault that comes in initially as no injuries. And so this is also going to parlay into what Councilmember Nelson had asked me earlier. Comes in as a call with no injuries. Police officer responds, they get there, they assess the situation, they start doing their report, and the citizen starts complaining of neck pain, leg pain, whatever it might be. And so the officer then calls dispatch to say that they need a medic unit to respond to the car accident. What's happened to the call processing time? It's huge now, right? Because we're only measuring it for our department, we're not measuring it for the police department. And so that call processing time has begun to increase by several minutes. And that's okay. They have help there, right? But then it also means that it looks like it takes us a lot longer to get there. That's why we have to set our ceiling at a level that makes it, you know, commensurate with the type of work that we're doing, and we just need to make sure that we're below that ceiling every time.
So what it measures...
Those are the baselines that are saying, hey, we're wanting to get here ninety percent of the time. So that's, I think that kind of, that seemed a little different than, I think, what we were thinking. So that's, now, one other thing, non-wildland and wildland.
Yep. So non-wildland, again, all the fires that we go to. So all of the fires that we go to are not, that are non-wildland. So non-wildland is anything that doesn't involve a brush fire, mulch fire, trees, et cetera. So that's vehicle fires, smoke odors inside, electrical shorts inside, trash fires, dumpster fires, vehicle fires. It's about eighteen different categories of fires. Explosions, aircraft down, all sorts of different, different call types are all in that, lumped into that category.
All right.
Then if you look on the next page, you'll notice that we identify major transportation, infrastructure, utilities, services, medical facilities, schools, government facilities, our frequent call types, our primary hazards for fire, and our primary hazards for non-fire. And again, we do this in a thoughtful manner for each census tract so that we can ensure that we're better, we're best telling our story about what's really happening every day in our city. So I wanted to walk you through a couple of things towards the end of the document. And let me just fast-forward here, and this will sort of hit on some questions that Councilmember Nelson had.
Is this active in the census tract?
It is well-acted of census tracts, yes, sir. I'm going to, I'll tell you here in just a second, soon as I find it.
Seven thousand four-hundred-and-eighty-six?
We're nothing if, we're nothing if but thorough. So if you look on page one-eighty-three on your mobile device, not one-eighty-three on the PDF, but when your mobile device registers, page one-eighty-three.
No, one-eighty-three on, I think they're different.
One-eighty-three on, what I mean...
What's the actual page?
The actual page number would be one-sixty-three.
Okay, but what's the title of the page?
Oh, the title page is moderate risk fire, non-wildland. Fire suppression.
Fire suppression, okay. Got it.
I'm on one-eighty-three, but it's in the...
The drop box is different.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, yeah, so you should be looking at something that looks like this. My apologies if you, I didn't realize that your view might be a little bit different than mine. I'm looking at the same document, but the view might be a little bit different.
So maybe by the actual...
He said forever.
It's down.
Uh, one-sixty-three.
Yeah, we have two more presentations to get to.
Okay.
So if you could kind of run us through it really quick.
Sure. This won't take but a second, it'll answer Councilmember Nelson's question, and I'll be done. Like I said, I could talk for quite a long time.
Good information.
Everybody sort of found it? Look on, use the buddy system?
We're good, Joe.
Okay, so, so we don't want to get hung up, again, in the ceiling that we're trying to achieve. And so if you look in this particular situation, although our total response time, we, our total call processing time, we want that to be one-hundred-and-fifty seconds, this is just a broad example of how we're getting better. So we used to be at one-hundred-and-fifty-seven seconds, but now we're at one-hundred-and-forty-nine seconds. So while it sounds like it's a, it's a lot of time, and it is a lot of time, there are things that we need to do to improve that process, there are ways that we're going to do that moving forward to make sure we lower those ceilings and make sure we can respond that much faster and more efficiently.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Warmer? And if not, we can, I'll go ahead, Councilmember Nelson.
One quick question. I was looking at census tract six and seven, and I see census tract seven, which includes Miller Park. Has Miller Park listed as a high-hazard area? And I assume that's with all the athletic injuries and so forth that you have to attend to over there. Then I look at six, the city cemetery is considered a high-hazard area. And without some sick joke, why is that?
Let me take a look at what page you answered. Oh, seven and six, I got you. Yep. So I can, what I can tell you is that we've changed Miller Park to a moderate risk. So that has already been changed. We actually did that the other day. So because of its parcel nature, that's what threw it into a high risk. I would suspect that that's why the city cemetery is also a high risk, because of its large parcel size. It's one of the elements that we looked at through the assessor's office, and one of the elements that we look at, you know, as part of our process. So we will certainly, you know, look at that. This has only been in effect for a couple of months, and so we're continuing to refine that. But I suspect for the cemetery, it's the same reason as it was for Miller Park. It's the actual parcel size is so large that it throws it into the special category.
Get in, hard to get in.
But I will certainly look into that.
Well, I was just curious.
It's on electronic heartbeat.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, appreciate your time.
Any further questions, we'll direct them to you. So thank you very much.
Very thorough.
Well, okay, we need approval. All right, Councilmember Perrow.
Madam Mayor, move. We endorse the chief's presentation, congratulate him on the thoroughness of the work, and approve it.
Second.
A motion's been made at second. Any further discussion?
Yeah. Let's talk about this for another hour.
All right. Thank you. All right, please cast your vote.
Thank you, good job.
Thank you, great job, and the motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, next is the update, the thriving city update.
Just a quick question, since it's almost six. Can we end after this one?
I mean, we, some of us in Finance Committee have been here since eleven, and led eleven-thirty. So lots of stuff to talk about and listen through.
And so you would want to bring back the discussion regarding the zoning ordinance amendments?
If we end after this one, then we can give this one due time.
Madam Mayor, I would support that, and I've actually received some correspondence about short-term rentals, and I'd like to do a little more on that.
Okay, all right, well, that's fine. I'm okay with that, Mr. Waterka. Then we're going to delay the discussion on short-term rental, and we'll continue with this. Thank you.
Thank you for those people that are fevered.
Thank you, very much.
Okay, I'm sorry for the delay there. Lots of stuff on this part of the block.
All right. Thank you. All right, Mr. Hughes, you're up. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. Back in November of two thousand and seventeen, council discussed poverty initiative as a portion of their annual retreat, and you heard information from groups about that initiative. In January of eighteen, you agreed on the thriving city concept and collapsed several city plans into that concept. Tonight's report will include an update on Lynchburg's poverty reduction efforts, as well as economic development blueprint for opportunity, the downtown twenty-fourty master plan, and reimagining neighborhood centers per your request. So two major facets that we're looking at in the poverty reduction strategy are our bridges-to-progress efforts, as well as some grants that we received related to temporary assistance for needy families, known as TANF, and we call that community wealth building. We'll talk about that some, as well as, again, reimagining neighborhood centers, the blueprint, and the twenty-fourty master plan for downtown. Under bridges-to-progress, this is a review briefly for those who may not know. We have these areas which are known to be barriers to those of our citizens who are striving to get out of the poverty conundrum. And those are, these task forces from bridges-to-progress are associated with the most known factors that we've identified in the city of Lynchburg. And we have representatives that are liaisons to the task forces, and they sit on a steering committee, and they all address these areas right here. Primary goals are to raise the median income, lower the poverty rate, as well as secure a foundation of healthy living and prosperity for our citizens. The steering committee meets monthly, and they will meet tomorrow at two o'clock down over at United Way. I'll give you a brief synopsis. I know you've already read your document, but, and this document is, of course, available online, but I'll identify some of the work that the task forces have been doing. The faith task force has been galvanizing the faith community to address poverty through a number of ways. They developed the bridges training for faith communities, have created mentor programs, working on partnerships, held an education forum in the faith community on various subjects. They also hosted a community dinner at neighborhood centers. You'll hear a lot about the collaboration between other city departments, as well as other nonprofits that suffer throughout this presentation. Our early childhood care and education, they have a strategic plan that was drafted, you heard about that previously, and they're moving forward to discuss quality childcare. They evaluated enrollment of Head Start in Virginia, preschool initiative programs in the area, and they're also collaborating with some of our neighborhood centers in distributing preschool information. Most notably, they're developing an interactive map of childcare providers and preschool programs so that they can be identified at a moment's notice. Our Virginia Career Works, they're serving as the primary workforce arm or tool in this toolbox of poverty reduction. They're working closely with a lot of community partners. We're in discussions about some grant opportunities with them, and noted that in two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, the data shows that they've had around sixty-seven-hundred touches, and thirty-four-hundred of those are city residents, because this organization does work regionally. The Career Essentials program is one of the opportunities that we're looking at, and I'll bring you some more information about that at a later date, once we, I have discussions with the directors of that program. Our legal group is still working on the backpack projects, re-entry guides. They are primarily looking at the assistance needed by those of our citizens who are returning from incarceration. You saw a couple of presentations from them, and there will be some updated information, but that's what they're still working on. Community programs, they did one at Jubilee, but the backpack project and re-entry guide are right now the primary focus of those groups. So the Education Committee or task force, their initial goal was to provide some tutor assistance, and they noticed that there were a lot of programs already in place for that assistance. So what they're doing is trying to channel some, through the University of Lynchburg's Education, Center for Education and Leadership, a program that provides tutors and mentors with the correct capacity to be effective. They worked, again, with our city neighborhood staff, did a pilot program, and now they're going to offer a full day of training with five of those modules. On our housing, there are joint efforts, and we've talked about affordable housing some here in the city, and they have the collaborative that's working with housing. The LYNCAAG first-time homebuyer program, because LYNCAAG is intricately involved in this housing discussion, they have fifteen individuals complete the program. Six of these have pre-qualified or actually purchased a home, and three were in the city. And I went myself to that graduation, and it was, it was very empowering to see people who thought they would never get a home and practice home ownership receive that question.
A long time ago, maybe totally different now, but back when I was on the CDBG, the local community development block grant funded LYNCAAG for the first-time homebuyer program. And so that the CDBG funding has a requirement that LYNCAAG, it had to be in the census tract. And so when you look at the fact that half of them weren't in the city, obviously, they couldn't even have been in the census tract if they didn't live in the city, is there a disconnect that I'm missing, or is there, or is this not funded by the CDBG money for the, to LYNCAAG first-time homebuyer program that I'm familiar with?
I'll take a note on that, if I need to.
Thank you. Because that, I mean, any of the CDBG funding does have the requirement that it goes to the census tract, and the census tract obviously can't be a census tract in Campbell County, it has to be in the city of Lynchburg.
So you're asking, I just want to make sure I have the right question.
So this says that three of, so six got funding by... So, this says that three of, so six got funding by LINCAG for first-time homebuyers of which only half of those were in the city of Lynchburg. So, thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Transportation, as we've discussed, is a big issue. The, we had the survey that was done and finished about a year ago. But the transportation committee is still working on some tenants of that survey. They're also continuing to see what the development of the move-up application is. Other than that, the task force has expanded. It dwindled down to a couple of people, but there are now some individuals within the locality who are involved in the transportation fight. And they have identified six goals for progress and ongoing transportation needs which include tweaking GLTC bus routes, expanding the transportation subcommittee, which they've done, but they want to do more. Search for grant funding with alternative forms of transportation to meet the needs of Lynchburg citizens. Partnering with a study on transportation that is being done by someone in the community. And also, again, a bullet point on there is helping to further the application that we've talked about with Dr. Salmon and the move-up application. A community group which was Poverty One-O-One at the beginning is mainly about education and awareness and items surrounding poverty. They sponsored the listening event, which was a poetry event to get people to come to talk about things that they have done in poverty, some obstacles that they've overcome, asked for people who are in poverty and some things. And they also showed some data, some ways that people can get out of poverty and some of the data statistics in our locality. They're rebuilding that team and making partnerships with organizations like Open Table, Virginia Career Works, which we talked about before, Interfaith Outreach and the Central Virginia Health District. And again, that is to provide a pathway for participants to continue through the continuum of services, a way of education and awareness, another arm of education and awareness for our citizens to know about where to refer people who are in poverty. Our food group most recently supported the effort by the Oasis Group to have a grocery store in a food desert in Lynchburg. As you may know, that group has decided to dissolve and determined that a brick and mortar store was not feasible in the food desert from what their study determined. So, they're looking at some alternatives to that. They're in a reorganization phase and they're, again, they're reassessing the available alternative to that. And they're continuing to work through our local food agencies like Blue Ridge Area Food Bank, Lynchburg Feeds, others like Parkview, et cetera. Sure.
No, I think, I can't remember, but I think it maybe got stopped. But I think they were asking for funding for a study and that never went through. Is that, am I right on that?
They had a study done.
But they didn't ask, did they ask for money from this? I guess the money that was contributed by our citizens to the poverty initiative, did that money go to do the study? Or did they do it on their own?
They had a couple of studies done and the money, they did have a study that was done through the poverty initiative money as well.
For that study?
Right.
Okay.
I have a follow-up as well. And just a suggestion. I'm wondering if the, with the recent change in providing groceries such as the, oh, I don't know, the, where you can go and pick it up in the parking lot. And I wonder if that could be combined with the transportation group and see if we can reduce the number of food deserts through transportation delivery or grocery delivery.
Noted.
Thanks.
And I know that there have been some, some definite transportation arms there. And Parkview, I think, is the location that you may be speaking of about where they distribute a lot of food. Parkview Community Mission, which is on Memorial Avenue, kind of near McDonald's. Oh, well, I mean, that's more maybe with, I see what you're saying, with a corporate arm. But there's, there's a lot of food distributed through some of our, some of these agencies already. And the thing is that part of it is, and it's close to the tenant of food deserts, is that there is a lot of food. There's the availability of it. The accessibility of food for people in our locality is the problem. And transportation is definitely a link to that.
So, if there's a transportation, it's already doing basically potentially nonprofit transportation. Maybe they can transport groceries to those areas. That's, that's just a thought.
That's personal.
Just as all of them, not period, this question would be good.
If we knew how much was paid on the studies, you know, I mean, it's, I think some of the, some of the items that we're doing, we really wanted to go to the utilization of something rather than, you know, something that didn't go to anything. You know, that assisted somebody. So, it'd be interesting to see what that was. Thank you.
No problem. Our health, mental health group are managing, still trying to manage the goals of improved access to care, community awareness. Talked about Medicaid expansion, some other treatments, holistic and crisis intervention training, which is a big piece of our interaction with the public. I think all of our police officers, for instance, go under CIT training and human services staff as well. But they're focused on doing some of the additional partnerships with other bridges to progress task forces. Health and mental health affects everyone, obviously. And so, that group has identified a couple of other task forces that they think would be great places to provide intervention. Another arm that I mentioned before are the temporary assistance for needy family grants. We're primarily using those for the Getting Ahead and Just Getting By World, which is a tenant of the Bridges Out of Poverty curriculum as well as our Tech Hire initiative. So, Alicia Metter, Shannon Brennan, Jerry Gibson and Manda Z. Dyke are facilitating those programs currently. And some of them may be here. I don't think Alicia's here. But those are the two that we are supporting when we, primarily that we're supporting through the grants that we ask for. And this does offset, obviously, some of the council appropriated funding for poverty reduction. Both programs are workforce-focused and assist participants through education, training and resource building. With Getting Ahead, we have a new cohort that just started a couple of weeks ago, September, early September of this year. Thirteen participants had a meeting with Ms. Brennan on yesterday and we still have thirteen that are in there. It's been about a week and a half in, which is good. There are two eight-week sessions at Parkview Mission and, two times a week for eight weeks, I apologize. And there's case management of the previous graduates, follow-up, monthly support, referral to other interventions, other programs along a continuum that the idea is for them to have career, career type of work at a living family wage job. And so, those connections come in through organizations or programs like Tech Hire and our workforce as well. With Tech Hire, two graduates from the River View Spark Lab and the Pilot Program were successful. One student and one that was a DARs recipient, which is Department for Aging and Rehabilitative Services. There's been some discussion earlier tonight on some other things about the population that may not be as ready to work due to some disabilities. Well, DARs addresses that and that's one area that we're reaching more deeply into with this TANF grant. Because some of our citizens who do have disabilities are able to work, but just for a shorter amount of time or less intense work, just depends on, but we're definitely trying to address those as well. Started a high school entrepreneurship program in September of 2019 with the Empowerment Academy in collaboration with them, River View's art space and vector space. Tech Hire also had a placement in May with seven referrals, found employment with assistance from partner agencies. They have currently eight active participants and that's somewhat fluid. And we're planning some listening lunches with community partners, participants in businesses as well as launching hirelynchburg.org. And economic development is a big part of what the Tech Hire program and what success for our workforce looks like. Those business relationships are crucial to the success of our participants. The fluidity of business from day to day, the hiring, Marjette Upsher and Alicia Metter are crucial factors in making sure that we have relationships where if we have someone that goes through the Tech Hire program, they're confident and say, we can at least give them a chance and let that work out.
So, with, I guess with a TANF grant, those are, I think we've had a couple of those, right?
Yes.
I mean, and that, I think each one of them were several hundred thousand dollars. And so, it'd be kind of nice to see, you know, were hundreds of people employed out of these hundreds of thousands of dollars in the grants? Or was it, what I'm seeing here, seven? That'd be kind of nice to see what that is numerically, to see the cost for the grant. And granted, I realize the grant comes from a state agency usually as opposed to our local taxpayer, but relative to the jobs that are, that'd be nice to see that trade-off. Because we've had it now for a few years, so.
So, we can look at that in a couple of ways when measuring success. A lot of what some of the employers are looking for are soft-scale related. We have participants who are decided to want to tackle intergenerational poverty and they're working on that. That is, the data is what we need. But we also have to take into consideration that it's not going to be a short-term fix. We're really looking at something that, we're going to have some data long-term. But we do have metrics that we have to report to the state, so we can report that as well. That's a great point. And I will say that, I'll give you some, for instance, some of the objectives for TANF. I don't think we ever even went over those, but there are four primary objectives to TANF in general. And I'll read those briefly for you. To provide assistance to needy families, obviously, that's intrinsic in the name. To independence of needy parents by promoting job preparation, work and marriage. Prevent and reduce out-of-work, out-of-wedlock pregnancies. And to encourage the formation and maintenance of two-parent families. I don't think we discussed that at all previously. We just kind of throw TANF up and think that it's just giving away money. But I want to point out the tenants of that federal program for your information.
I missed that. I think those tenants are very, very important.
And that's exactly what we're trying to work on. Thank you. So, in this collaboration, along with our Getting Ahead programs as well as our Tech Hire, we're looking at assisting with the Home Essentials program with Parkview Community Mission. We can, we're expanding into career coaching, mentoring, targeted outreach into our urban core, which we identified as the highest poverty areas, and contracting with ESOs or employment service organizations. These are some of the organizations that not only help the DARs population, but we can contract with employees, people who work with these. We don't have to have staff do the work is my, some of my point. We can contract with these organizations so that they can have a deeper reach into our community as well as provide internships. So, I'm trying to work on some of those even within the city of Lynchburg where we have people who are applying for jobs, but they want to maybe have an internship. Some of the grant money allows for bonuses or incentives at the end of a period, which is always good if you're doing, there's nothing like an unpaid internship. Some of our next steps to continue the community outreach, supportive bridges, task force work, direct all program initiative graduates toward a continuum of Getting Ahead or Career Essentials or Workforce so that they know coming in that this is a long-term investment that our staff are working with them and our contracted providers are working with them on. It's not a one and done, you just come to this class. We are invested in your future, which is also the future of the city of Lynchburg. And to keep post-secondary education, family dynamics and career objectives relevant. We want to, of course, consider all of this impact to the greater thing of, point of raising the median household income and lowering the poverty rate. And so, that's my presentation on that piece of it. I have my other colleagues that will continue with the thriving city presentation, but I'll be glad to welcome any questions you may have.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hughes. Very interesting. You've described the variety of programs and participants in those programs. How would you characterize the local employers, businesses who would be hiring the graduates and those who complete the program? Are they, is there an abundance? Are they receptive and enthusiastic or is it more subdued?
I think the, Alicia, if you want to answer some of that question, you may. If not, I would say generally, again, I would refer to some of the work that they're doing definitely. I think a perfect example is the KDC interventions and programs that we, that had at Jubilee. Staff went over to KDC just to talk about some other, some things related to economic development. And they really put their best foot forward realizing that they have a problem or an issue there with their employees and are really looking to invest in the area and the neighborhood they're in. So, my experience is that the businesses have been on board, looking with, just talked today with Bank of the James about assisting with some, a financial arm and a group of people that are associated with, associated with this grant. So, that's generally. I think another piece of that is that things, again, change so, so much in that world of business. And that's, that world is navigated well by Marjette and her team, but things do change sometimes in the boardroom. And I'll note for the record that our poverty rate, looking at the five-year estimates of the American Community Survey, from 2011 to 2015 was twenty-four point eight, that's something that we talked about. Twenty thirteen to twenty seventeen is twenty-two point three now. MHI or median household income from 2011 to 2015 was around thirty-nine thousand five hundred. MHI now is forty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-one. Our annual average unemployment rate 2015 was five point six, 2018, four point five. And our graduation rates was something that we've talked about before. This is from DOE, from Department of Education in Cohort Four. It's eighty-two point three in 2015, eighty-six point four in 2018. So, I think we are making a bridge to progress. Thank you. Question?
You know, I think we talked about it just, or was on one of the items earlier this afternoon. But as far as our, the food stamp program, for example, that's something that we administer. And so, if we look at what number we had in two thousand, whatever year you wanted to pick versus now, I think that's something that we could kind of internally measure pretty easily. We can call social services or the...
Some of that, we talked about last time.
Okay. So, what is, what, do you know what those numbers are off the top of your head or, but that would be a good number. A lot of times those percentages, when we saw them before, may have been, you know, somebody had to come in and say, well, it's not really just the college students. And so, a lot of those numbers can be, I mean, maybe somewhat skewed or misinterpreted. I think our numbers, what we had on, you know, food stamps in Lynchburg, social services versus now, that'd be a good metric.
And I think that Social Services Director was here and said that the numbers were going down on our rolls. Yeah. And, and also, I think I did get some, I just corresponded and I did get an answer. I think the housing question that Councilmember Huggelson said, that program is possibly all VHDA funds so that there's no CDBG funds going toward housing outside of Lynchburg. The LINCAG one, yes. So, it's all VHDA funds. So, you can, yeah, yeah. So, that's a quick answer. But thank you. Is there any further questions on this part of the presentation? Thank you, Mr. Hughes. We look forward to the, the future work that's coming. Sounds like it's being successful.
Do you now have Charlotte Lester come for reimagining neighborhood centers?
Thank you.
And Jenny Jones, just working.
Just assisting.
You want to use this or?
Hello. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm Charlotte Lester, the coordinator for Parks and Rec Neighborhood Centers. And I'm providing the update on reimagining neighborhood centers.
Vice Mayor Dolan is going to continue for me, so, thank you.
So are the rest of us.
No, we are not. We are not. They will be here.
The rest of us later will be important.
Thank you. I just didn't want you to think it, it wasn't important.
Right. Understood.
Go right ahead.
Okay. So, the neighborhood centers are in a state of renewal as reflected in our 2020 goals. 2020 goals. The goals of the Neighborhood Centers Division invest in three distinct areas, those being our facility renewals first, next, our staff and partnership development, and finally, programs and services, deepening those which support family, work, and education. So first, I will offer an overview of the facility renewal project. The goal is to complete the facility improvement projects at each of the six Neighborhood Centers by 2020. These projects have all been funded through Community Development Block Grant Funds with the recommendations of the Community Development Advisory Committee and with the approval of City Council. The facility renewals have focused on improvements to the functional use of the facilities and the use of durable, easy-to-maintain finishes, while also celebrating the unique neighborhood character. In the fall of 2018, the College Hill and Daniels Hill Center projects were completed and programming resumed. The second round of renewal projects is now underway. The Diamond Hill Center project has been completed, staff are moving back into the center, and programming will resume in October. The Jefferson Park Center project is underway currently and is slated for completion by The third round of facility renewal projects is slated for design and construction by the spring and summer of 2020. The remaining Neighborhood Center facility interiors included in this third and final round are Fairview Heights Center and Yoder Center. The second goal is to invest in staff and partnerships. This investment includes bolstering staff development around safety and security. Examples include visual management of equipment supplies and materials, establishing boundaries in the workplace, sight and sound supervision, and the development of a standard operations Also included in the goal of investing in staff and partnerships is enhancing training around our key services. Examples include the social-emotional learning aspect of youth programming at the centers, preschool and post-secondary education needs, career development for teens and young adults. Also, in the, sorry, excuse me, also in this goal is deepening partnerships and collaborations to meet community needs. Examples include our ongoing federal work-study center assistant partnerships. We have three to four work-study students at each center who help support our after-school programs. Internship opportunities with higher education institutions. We've had numerous internship opportunities with students from Liberty University, Randolph College, and the University of Lynchburg. Nonprofit organizations and neighborhood groups. We are expanding and deepening our connections with our nonprofit organizations. Examples include working with the Beacon of Hope to meet the young people where they are at the centers. We're exploring the ways to make that sort of relationship work. Today, we met with Three Ridge Organics, and we are looking at our fresh produce at the centers as soon as mid-October through that multi-department collaboration with Public Works, Economic Development, Parks and Recreation, and Three Ridge Organics.
Could we ask a question on that?
You may.
So the agreement was to allow Three Ridge Organics to use city property, and then sort of for the first year as, as, in lieu of rent, they would provide fresh produce to the Neighborhood Centers? And that was, and just to understand, that was supposed to start as of October? Is that right? According to the contract?
I believe so, that's correct. So we met today with the senior staff at the 300 Rutherford Street site because they want to provide produce for the community. Three Ridge Organics, they do, but they want to make sure they're giving the community what they want to. So we're working with staff to really orchestrate what that might look like, and including an educational component as well, so it's put to good use. Yeah, we're looking at microgreens and strawberries for October, and some of the crops that are on a three-month growing period would be coming in later. So they are growing. We sampled today, so. Another example is working with Freedom 424 to keep our kids safe. Deepening partnerships and collaborations to meet community needs also involves working with our fellow departments and other government agencies. We've been working with Virginia Career Works to really see how we can, again, meet people where they are and provide meaningful services in the center environment. Also exploring opportunities to work more closely with the Virginia, well, the Lynchburg Health Department. And another example is our work with the Fire Department. They approached us about offering a quarterly How to Save a Life series at the Neighborhood Centers, and so our first will be in October at Daniels Hill Center, and then we'll have, these will be hosted at each of our centers on a quarterly basis, and it's really meant to be a way that community members can step in as a first responder until the officials The third area of investment is in our featured programs and services. The Framework for Neighborhood Center Programs and Services is built upon support for family, support for work, and support for education. These three broad areas have been selected based on the bipartisan findings of the Brookings Institute and the American Enterprise Institute in their collaborative work, opportunity, responsibility, and security, a consensus plan for reducing poverty and restoring the American dream. We held an off-site, a staff off-site in August to deepen our work, and we came out with our next steps, things that we could do immediately around these areas, things that we could do by January, and things that we could do by this time next year. Some of the immediate things we're putting into play now, and I plan to report on the by-January items at our next presentation of Thriving Cities. But first, let me talk a little bit about the support for families. So support for families includes increasing access to effective parenting education, exploring the Stronger Families, Brighter Futures Program, which is an evidence-based program offered through the Virginia Department of Health, and providing relevant workshops and classes. As you can imagine, there are a number of things that could fall under the banner of support for family that's, that could be included in a workshop or a family meal night. Next, support for work, the second area of our featured programs and services. In this area, staff serve to, as connectors to valuable services, and the center facilities serve as valuable connecting points. To support work for neighborhood residents, we are deepening our connections to Beacon of Hope, the Youth Futures Coordinator, and Virginia Career Works. The third and final area of featured programs and services is support for education. This work includes the expansion of the Caregiver Attended Preschool Playgroup Program. Playgroup is currently offered at Daniels Hill Center on Wednesday and Friday mornings, and on October 15th, we will expand to a second location, the Yoder Center, on Tuesday and Thursday mornings. We are also exploring movement and music-based programs for 2020 for adult caregiver and child. In addition, centers are committed to social-emotional learning in our youth programming, with the support of University of Lynchburg and Lynchburg City Schools through the collective impact model. We are building, we are building upon developmental assets, relationship building, and positive behavior support. Finally, to support education, centers are setting reading as a center value to help to close the opportunity gap and to close the resource gap. I've completed the summary of featured programs and services, which again, support family, work, and education. So in conclusion, the six Neighborhood Centers remain in a state of renewal, the facility upgrades are in progress, investments are being made in staff partnerships and agency collaborations, and programs and services are being developed to support family, work, and education. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
It's very interesting, your presentation, and I'm very, very pleased to see what is going on in the community centers, since these are located in very strategic areas of the city that have high needs for what you do present. With regard to the Culture of Reading Program, are the parents of the children in that program actively involved with their child in that program?
We are establishing our center libraries. We've worked with the public library on establishing the center libraries, and we're developing that program. We do recognize the value of the reading program, of reading for children, period, as early and as often as possible. So I believe we are trying to really help to be part of a collective impact model that includes the schools, the centers, and after-school programs across the city, and also the parents. So as, as often as we can connect all three of those areas to support these things, that, that's the direction we're trying to go. So we are at the beginning stages of developing the reading as a culture at the centers. I know they've made progress with that, especially at Fairview Heights Center, where they have a strong partnership with Bass Elementary School for a 21st Century After-School Site.
Certainly, and I would imagine you will not find any resistance from the schools or from the library to be involved in that, but having the parent be an active participant is going to be the key to that child's success with regard to reading, what goes on when they're at home. Second thing I was interested to know is with regard to the effective parenting education, is, what is the enrollment capacity, and is that capacity reached?
So we have worked with Smart Beginnings and other nonprofit agencies to offer courses for parents and support for parents.
How many are enrolled at this point?
We have, we do not have one actively going at this moment, but it is, we are incorporating other educational opportunities that, for example, during family meal night, where it's less of a time commitment, we realize that parents are very busy. They're taking care of, it's a stage of life where they're busy taking care of their children and many times also their parents. So it is a very challenging time to get people in that stage of life when they're, you know, busy raising their family and supporting their, their, their parents.
What is the plan to get those parents involved in the effective parenting education if they're not, if their daily life makes it difficult?
So we have found success in our work with the preschool playgroup. That's been our, our greatest success because it's the, the parent comes with the child to playgroup, so it's a peer support network for the parents, and it's a great intro to education and socialization for the child, which prepares them for school. So the, the peer support network that the parents experience in playgroup with the additional supportive staff and Lynchburg City School staff really helps to guide the parent. It helps them to understand where their child is developmentally, and if they need additional support, and what is normal for that age, how they can support their child in their education. And we do try to offer additional support and services and resources to parents at the center, including those who attend the playgroup.
And this goes on in each of the six centers?
Playgroup is currently offered, it will be offered at two sites, it's four days a week total. And we do wish to expand that model to each of the centers, the playgroup, as resources allow. You're welcome.
Councilmember Hegelson?
Thank you. In commemoration of the model that you had on there about adults getting up and getting moving, I'm going to do just that, so excuse me. Thank you.
Welcome.
Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you. Thank you. I've got some operational questions. I've got no, no concerns whatsoever about what you're doing as far as the remodeling and your, and your mission, but several years ago, there was a problem maintaining consistent hours of operation at the centers and, and making sure that the programs were available, and then I, I think an inconsistency of hours of operation was probably the main thing. How are you doing with that? Has that improved? Are your hours consistent?
So at this point, we have enough staffing to run our programs adequately. We have one full-time and two part-time staff members at each center so that we, we are able to maintain all of the ratios needed to serve youth and people of all ages. So we do not have a problem at this point with our staffing, which would, that would be the, the element that would affect if we had to close a center for a temporary period.
I'd also be interested in seeing, I'd also be interested in seeing the attendance, you know, basically just how, how busy are the centers? I was very disappointed to, to lose the Jefferson Center and the, and the Boys and Girls Club. Thank you. Obviously, I suffered from a little bit of insomnia last night for the first time ever, so I'm struggling on like two and a half hours of sleep. My apologies if I'm a little disjointed and jittery from all the coffee I've been drinking. And so that, they had a very high attendance rate there, which I love to see. I hope that you're having similar successes in that. I'd be interested in the trends and how many children you are affecting in the various centers. I know that Daniels Hill's been traditionally a very effective center. I think the Yoder Center has as well, Timberd Hill. And, and I think that's critically important is also your work in education, because the additional contact time, and I think the, one of the other things I really liked about what the Boys and Girls Club was doing was they had the volunteers in providing additional contact and education time, specifically with reading. I see you're doing a lot of the same thing. I think that's great. I'd love to see how successful you're being in that, and to me, that's, however you want to present that data, but how many, how many children are you impacting? I don't need that answer now, but it's something that I'd be interested in seeing going forward.
Sure, I can certainly provide that. I will have a caveat that the numbers have been impacted by the centers being closed for renewal projects, some as many as six to nine months. So it does impact our numbers, but we've collected data for at least five years. I, I can certainly provide you information on attendance.
Councilmember Wilder.
Just one quick question.
Yes.
I know we had talked about some of the community centers being eligible to receive funds or apply for grants from the, from the, from the Bridges to Progress, from the Bridges to Project funds? I'm sorry, I'm a little tired as well, too. Excuse me. Have they established a, a measure for that yet, or how was the process on that? Whoever, Mr. Hughes, I'm sorry, maybe?
The question is, established how they've, how to access that?
Yes, to be decided on that, if those, the community centers can apply for some of those funds under the grant process?
Yeah, with that attachment to the notes, the mayor vice mayor notes from earlier, was it last week? Yeah, last week. So with, with that, then that was the draft. If there's no edits to that that may come from any of your conversation, then they will be given that pretty soon here. That was a couple, that was a couple lines of information on that, on that memo that were supported by city management as an operational piece, and so I thought that was completely appropriate, and they would go through the same guidelines as, with the CDAC, and then that decision ultimately, of course, rests with, rests with council, but they would fill out the application in a similar manner to anyone else. the application in a similar manner to anyone else with the task force.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Lester. So, economic development and tourism. Marjette, here we come. You have 30 seconds. No, I'm just kidding.
We're trying to make your face up. I can't up here so you can jump right on.
I'm finished. So, good evening, Madam Vice Mayor and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to give you a thriving cities update for the Office of Economic Development and Tourism and the museum system. So, I always like to reiterate for you all the strategic plan that we launched in September of 2018. The slide that's up now is the timeline on that. We are into the first year implementation of that plan. And I want to... I'll move to the next slide. Thank you so much. To talk about our vision statement, we shout this from the rooftops, that the city of Lynchburg, Virginia is one of the best small cities in the country, driven by innovative businesses and forward-thinking organizations. Lynchburg is a community that values history, natural beauty, and healthy, inclusive neighborhoods. Every resident has the opportunity to thrive in the city of Lynchburg. So, we have five goals to focus on: existing businesses first, leverage and engage our anchor institutions, talent development and skills matching, maximize placemaking and tourism assets to drive growth, and to effectively tell the story of Lynchburg's competitive identity, both from a business perspective and a tourism perspective. So, I just want to go over really quickly our accomplishments since the last time we stood before you. We've had 20 in-person and onsite business visits with city employers in our industry clusters. We did a headquarter visit to Pacific Life. We hosted Senator Warner for an Opportunity Zone Roundtable. We submitted the Enterprise Zone Annual Reports for both Zone Two and Zone Forty-Six. We have initiated a partnership with the Edison Welding Institute, which is a research and development group out of Columbus, Ohio, that we have developed a partnership with for our advanced manufacturers to... For this group to come down and provide services, innovation services, process services to our manufacturers. They've already spent two days in August with BWXT. We've audited and made revisions to our local Enterprise Zone Redevelopment Grant. We are beginning to plan for our second, Create Virginia. And our fall 2020 Co-Stars classes started, and it's got 12 participants in it. So, I've got some photos here. Took a photo of the Big Whale, as it's called, in Newport Beach, California. That's in the atrium of Pacific Life's headquarters. And then, that is a photo of the roundtable that Senator Warner held with developers and interested investors on the Opportunity Zone. So, that was Goal One. Goal Two is we held our anchor kickoff, and I'm very pleased to say, not only did we do the educational piece of that, but we then held our first anchor strategy meeting, and all of the anchors were represented. We held the State Games of America in the end of July and the beginning of August. We had the anchor working group. Our entrepreneurship program finalized with the Empowerment Academy. I think you heard John talk about our Tech Hire program, which is now, we've kind of rebranded that to Hire Lynchburg, but works with the Empowerment Academy at Lynchburg City Schools and also with River Views in their lab and as well as vector space. Staff was appointed to the Mechatronics Advisory Board for CVCC. We're trying to develop these partnerships with all of our anchors. And this is a... We're showing you the capacity crowd at the anchor strategy education meeting, and then that's a group of adorable children that participated in the State Games of America. Goal Three, we may have talked about this before, but LSC closed its doors. Reed and I have actually already taken prospects on that property to let them see it. That is a mammoth property, almost 700,000 square feet. But LSC, when I was talking to the plant manager who has stayed, and they will clean up the building from this point forward, told me in all earnestness that he was so appreciative of the response, the rapid response that came from the state, but also what came from the city of Lynchburg. And I believe that most of the people that wanted a job were re-employed elsewhere within the city. We have... Mondese Dyke has been hired as a new Tech Hire Navigator, and we're supporting vector space in a women in machining program in July. We supported a statewide level-up. The first, the Alliance, Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance, held a Young Professional Summit here in the city. It sold out. They invited people from all over the state. They had a wonderful panel, which Anna Benson, the Assistant Director moderated for them. A very impressive group on that panel. Inbe Handy CEO, the HR Director from Delta Star, and I think Damian Cabezas from Horizon Behavioral Health participated on that. But really exciting to put that event together and have it. I think a lot of the people that attended felt like, the young professionals felt like it was really worth it. And then, what you've heard everybody talk about tonight, which is just our KDC One Community Event, which was unbelievable. So, once again, we talked a little bit about it today in our group for the Lynchburg Plan, but from a workforce development standpoint, when we're calling on companies, we are really trying to either connect them or facilitate something happening as soon as they bring the need to our attention. So, in this particular instance, KDC, unlike a lot of the manufacturers, and I think the question was asked earlier by Councilmember Nelson about how the business community receives things like Tech Hire and Hire Lynchburg, I don't... Some of them don't have huge amounts of jobs there that don't require specific skills like welding, that you could probably go out and talk to a group of manufacturers, Delta Star, BWXT, Framatome, and they tell you they need 100 welders. Well, that's needed all over the country and very difficult. Doesn't mean we don't try, but very difficult to turn around. When you walk into most other places, they have a number of jobs there that are not filled, but we have great relationships with them. And what they really are is they trust us enough to allow any of the programs that we're trying to pilot to let them participate in that and give it a shot, which I think is pretty remarkable. But KDC had 200 open positions. And so, we sat there and brainstormed. Reed happened to be on that appointment with me, and I just had this idea that our, and always have, that our community centers and other organizations out there, like the Boys and Girls Club and the Jubilee, that are in neighborhoods, we can hold events there. Not only are we looking at the immediate need of that business, but we're also exposing the children and everybody in that neighborhood to that employer. And so, that, to me, is building long-term pipelines if the employer will stay engaged with us. So, from the time we imagined this, which I got pretty fired up about, and met with Councilmember Wilder directly after that, it was six weeks till we pulled this off. So, we had an unbelievable event. KDC was fantastic to work with. Everything Alicia Metter in the back, my economic development manager, put together an outline. It's a model that we can probably use with other employers. We would tweak it, but they brought their own people. Some of the people were from the neighborhood that came down there. We had food. We had games. We had crafts. We had a bounce house. We had a dynamite basketball tournament. We also had jobs. And onsite there, and we had food. We... You have to have food. But we also had... KDC had applications there. They had staff to answer people's questions. There was not much of any question that you could ask that somebody there wouldn't answer, and I was totally over the moon when I found out they were interviewing and hiring people on the spot. It... You had to be there to see people walking in with strollers, having no idea, and thinking that they were going to be caught up in the gauntlet, which can be an application and waiting to hear if it goes through, and maybe struggling with the questions on the application, but to have all that happen within 45 minutes. Over 200 people came through Jubilee Center, probably 30 to 40 people applied for jobs. Not only did we do the job applications, but we also had people onsite from Tech Hire and Hire Lynchburg to... With Chromebooks to take surveys, to make sure that we found out, well, if you didn't get employed, and if you did get employed, what are your barriers to employment? And then, we planned with Jubilee Center to set a series of workshops where we address those issues. So, it'll be one of my proudest moments. Yes, I do. Thank you so much. Yes, I do. And I will say that they were fantastic to work with. But that just goes to show, I mean, I think that really made a difference to KDC, that it always makes me feel good when we can make a suggestion and then see it to completion. We're not turning somebody over. Not to say that some of the resources out there, they're fabulous to work with, but when you can take it from the idea all the way to the finish line, that was a great day. So, we have already had calls from the business community to replicate something like that, and I happen to believe that while the outline of that will be very, very useful, and we can deploy resources, I do believe each one of them will be individual and specific. And I think that'll set us apart as a city that really is very business-friendly. So, as if that wasn't enough. So, there's our flyer and the folks there. So, I'll move on quickly. Goal Four, we have initiated a sports strategic plan, and as a matter of fact, the week after next, we are putting together the working group for that, and that'll be like the representatives and athletic directors at the colleges, and Parks and Rec, and all those people coming together to find out how we can take sports tourism and elevate it here in the city. The Visitor Center, if you haven't been there, the renovation and reopening was in June. It's absolutely beautiful and a wonderful, wonderful public space. We think it's a great welcoming, not only to visitors, but also our own citizens, to reengage with what a great city they live in. We have new gateway signs, thanks to Gay Now, and Reed and Anna riding around, making sure each one of them got done before the State Games. There's a beautiful picture of one that I'll show you in just a second. I made a presentation at the Virginia Brown Fields Conference to talk about the grants that we've gotten and the hopes that I have for what we can continue to do in that arena. We just completed an air service survey, which was sent in partnership with the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance to capture that data. That's what we were told to do from the consultant that's working with Mark, capture that data from the companies as to what their growth trajectory will be. We're partnering with Downtown 2040 Implementation. That's ongoing. So, I think we have a photo of the Visitor Center ribbon cutting and that beautiful sign, if you haven't seen it, that's out there on Woods Road. Goal Five, we hired a Lynchburg Experience Manager. That's what we're calling the... It used to be called the Visitor Center Manager. Now, it's the Lynchburg Experience Manager. And we've got... We had some folks retire that had been with us for a very long time, and we have replaced some of the staff there. We got great coverage on the sports strategic plan from Lynchburg Business. This is all about telling the story. We presented at City Nation Place Americas Conference in LA in June. We updated the advertising at the Lynchburg Regional Airport. It is amazing back where the luggage carousel is. It looks fantastic. We're implementing an annual tourism and economic development advertising strategy, and hopefully, all of you saw that Lynchburg was listed as the only Virginia-set city set to boom on MSN. Amazing. So, that's the newly skinned wall at the airport, and that's a screenshot of the city set to boom. Fantastic. Thank you so much, and I will be happy to answer any questions if you aren't famished and about to follow up.
Right.
Our pretty impressive. And so, I think I'm just really grateful for all of the work that the city team is doing in this regard. It's really exciting stuff.
It is. It's wonderful, and it takes a village. Everybody in here, all the departments, come together and help. We couldn't do any of this without all the other departments here. So, we are so grateful to them, but we also believe that all of this makes a huge difference to our citizens and our business community.
Are there any other questions?
The work you're doing, the enthusiasm for our city with our businesses, we really appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you.
And now, here's Ken. Can we get a Cliff's Notes version of Downtown 2040?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. Of course, you articulated your vision for downtown through the 2040 Master Plan that you adopted back in November of 2018. It speaks to an exciting atmosphere that makes downtown Lynchburg the heart of the region. So, in partnership with Downtown Lynchburg Association, city departments continue to work with our downtown stakeholders to move us towards that vision. Some of the highlights since our last update include the addition of Donna Park, which is a pocket park at Church and 11th that provides a welcome respite for visitors and locals alike. The placemaking... This placemaking partnership is made possible through the Shul Charitable Foundation in honor of Donna Shul Clark. Of course, the maintenance of Midtown Parking Deck is wrapping up, which will extend the life of this critical asset that services area businesses and residents. Year Two of Downtown Lynchburg Association Storefront Occupancy Count continues to establish an annual benchmark for business recruitment and retention downtown. Marjette just talked about the incredible renovations to the Lynchburg Visitor Center and what a great asset that is to our community and specifically downtown. And as you know, the Main Street Renewal Project officially started last week. The city Appalachian Power Joint Utility Upgrade will replace aging water lines, many dating back to the 1800s, update streetscape features on Main Street, and modernize the underground electrical system to improve reliability and provide for future development. This partnership is fostering efficient coordination in the project area with the goal of only disrupting Main Street stakeholders one time instead of multiple times, as well as allowing for cost-sharing opportunities between the city and AEP. Temporary Wayfinding Signage is up, and we've heard lots of positive feedback. This has proven helpful for visitors and even... Temporary. Once the Main Street Renewal Project is complete, the goal is to kind of unify that signage across.
The Downtown Lynchburg Association.
Correct.
So, now we've got some temporary wayfinding signage in addition to the parking signage?
So, that parking signage is seen as temporary through, and then, when the whole renewal project is complete, we'll have one consistent palette that will unify the signage across. But even that temporary signage has proven helpful for visitors and local residents alike to find landmarks and access parking. Our downtown continues to maintain a strong network of businesses that convene to discuss important topics. And in July, Lynchburg hosted the Virginia Main Street Conference, where the Academy of Music Theater won this year's Best Historic Vitalization Project in the Commonwealth of Virginia. From intimate speakeasies to our 11th Get Downtown, which brings thousands to Main Street, downtown continues to be the destination for successful events, both large and small. And the Lynchburg Community Market, a hallmark of the 2040 Plan, continues to thrive. The farmer's market portion of the market is experiencing the best-selling year in a decade, as reported by the farmers. While the indoor market is celebrating a recent addition of two... addition of two anchor stores. In addition, the We Got the Beat Health and Wellness Program was at capacity this year with numerous central city camps, camp programs participating in that effort. So, in the months ahead, the loading zone pilot evaluation period is wrapping up, and staff expects to report out to council on the results of that next month. The Downtown Lynchburg Association, Appalachian Power, the city and River Views are partnering on an awareness campaign that includes signage and art installations associated with the Main Street Renewal Construction. This week's Amazing Miles Kids Run, the upcoming Ugly Bug Ball, the Zombie Walk, and a bevy of concerts will highlight this fall as we work our way towards Small Business Saturday and Winter Lights on the Bluff Walk later this year, keeping that trend of successful events. No doubt heard, thanks to the generous support of the Quanis Club of Lynchburg, the Department of Parks and Recreation is planning to add a playground, adding, planning to add playground equipment to Riverfront Park that will complement the existing spray ground there. And the Lynchburg Community Market will begin opening the first Sunday of every month from 11 to 3 to provide fresh produce to local neighborhoods. So, with that, you've certainly gotten the theme that our respective departments and partners continue to collaborate on the various intersection. You've heard that throughout the presentation. There are some examples on the screen, if you have any questions. And with that, we appreciate your time and are happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Carroll.
First Sundays? So, so, the farmer's market's open every Saturday, obviously. So, that gets extended on the first Sunday?
On the first Sunday, just select times, 11 to 3, and it's that goal of making fresh produce available to the neighborhoods, providing that additional access.
Just an additional day. So, effectively, it's a 25% increase in availability.
Yes, sir.
All right. And who's sponsoring the playground at the Riverfront Park?
The Lynchburg Quanis Club.
Quanis. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Mark. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, this brings us to roll call.
No items.
Congressman Wilder?
Well, again, thank KDC for the job that they did at Jubilee. Also, thank you to the Blue Ridge Food Bank. They did a senior food drive at the Clearbrook Apartments, only for senior citizens, that was a wonderful event for that. And then, we went on to the emergency, the dedication of the, of the name of the emergency building, Emergency Services Building. That was wonderfully, in honor, in memory of, I think, I think it was Barry, I believe, Barry Martin, in memory of him. It was a great event as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Carroll.
Just a quick note that I kept forgetting to bring up, I think it, maybe it's to Mr. White. I've noticed at the, I can't remember the name of it, it's off of Boonswell Road slash 501, commonly referred to as the Cheese Creek Trailer Park, there is a mountain of trash bags behind one of those structures. Now, I think that constitutes a public nuisance. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I just want to remind everyone, if they don't know, we've got the 10-miler this coming Saturday. I want to thank all of the city staff, all of the sponsors, and anyone and everyone who's participating in making that successful. I think the weather's going to be good. Hope everybody's out there in one way or the other.
Thank you. And I have three items and one that you just mentioned, the Virginia 10-miler at 8:00 M E.C. Glass High School, Saturday, September 28th. Just want people to know that pay attention to the roads that will be closed. The Amazing Mile Children's Run, 1 to 5, Amazement Square, Friday, September 27th. Again, there'll be some street closings for that. And then, the Economic Development Annual Report is Thursday, September 26th, 5 to 6:30 PM, at the Academy of Arts and White Gallery. Thank you very much, and we are now adjourned. It's over now.